Good morning. The City of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for October 20th is now in session. Chairwoman Arajo is unavailable, so I will be chairing today's session. And Member Kindel will be serving as the acting architect. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law and the executive order of Governor Baker suspending certain provisions thereof due to the ongoing public health crisis. The hearing of the board is being held remotely via the WebEx event platform. This hearing is also being live streamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The number of people called upon to comment at the time for commenting will be limited by the chair as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the Raise Your Hand icon in the application via the WebEx event platform. To raise your hand, click the participant information icon. From there, find your name, and on the lower right-hand side, you should see a hand-raising icon. Click the icon, and your hand will be virtually raised. Click it again, and your hand should go down. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, press star three to raise your hand. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first, and then can provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. Before we begin, I'd like to take a roll call of board members to see who's here. Can you each unmute yourself and just say name and present?
Karen Kindele, present.
Carrie Look, present.
Joe Gergero, present.
Mark Fortune, present.
Ed Devoe, present.
Okay, we have a six-member board today, so that should be okay. As usual, we are running one or two short of the full complement of seven. We are pleased that the city council did act recently to approve two new board members who, once they have undergone training, will join us and hopefully deal with the quorum issues that we've had in the past. Now, having done that, so thanks to the city council for taking that action. Mr. Fortune, will you now begin with the call of the list?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pardon me if I say Madam Chair, because I'm so used to Christine being here, so.
It's okay, I won't take it personally.
Okay. Going to call the first order for extension, calling BOA 787-903, 29 Pinehurst Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. Good morning. This is Leondria Brantl at 29 Pinehurst Street, Rosendale, Mass., 02131.
Good morning, how are you today? Could you tell us why you're seeking an extension?
The pandemic created some challenges for me in getting my project started, and so back in March, when everything got shut down, I requested an extension. Since that time, we've been able to get through almost a whole process, but the project has not started, and I'm hoping we would be able to get started. So my permit is issued, but at this point, I couldn't get a term commitment from any contractors to begin the work until the spring. So I just wanted to make sure I was.
Okay, okay. When does the current permit expire?
I think it expired in April. I can give you the permit number.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I can speak. It did expire on April 13th of this year, but due to the governor's orders, I'll make the motion for a one-year extension.
From the time of expiration?
From the time of expiration, correct.
Okay. To the, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries. To the applicant, if this happens again, you want to make sure that you seek an extension before the permit expires. But you're all set for?
I do want to say I did ask in March when he declared a state of emergency immediately.
Okay, good. Well, you're all set. You have an extension until next April.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good day, everyone.
Calling a next case for extension, calling BZC 32903, 188 High Street. Mr. Chair, this will be the fifth extension. It does expire on January 29th of 2021. I just want to make sure that everybody, I'll read those into the record so the board members will understand when it did expire. Name and address for the record, please.
Wait, Mr. Fortune, it expired last January or it's going?
No, it's going to expire this January 21st, January 29th of 21.
But this is the, this is the request, the fifth request for an extension?
Correct.
Okay, is the applicant?
Name and address for the record, please.
This is Chris Elsie, 188 High Street, Boston, Massachusetts. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Can you please explain why you're requesting another extension?
Well, I'm a new property owner, and we have the current property under contract, and we're wanting to develop it into this hotel. The current property owner, I think because of the pandemic and previous things, didn't have maybe the financial capabilities to develop the project, and so we are fully intending on developing the project. And however, we need an extension, and they're closing on the property here at the end of the month and are submitting to the building department here at the beginning of the first quarter. However, we need the extension to be able to continue on with the zoning, to build.
So it was the previous owner who sought the other four extensions?
Correct.
Okay, so this is your first request for an extension?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Just so you'll know, we virtually never grant four or five extensions, but given the fact that this is your first request, I will, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion for a one-year extension from 129 of 21.
I'll second that, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries. To the applicant, I would suggest that you make sure that you get whatever you need to get done before this current extension expires.
Thank you, very much appreciated. Take care.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 694-031, 31 Woodlawn Street. Counselor, you're online?
I am, yes.
Is 33 also involved with 31?
That is correct.
Okay, so I'm going to call 33 also into the record, calling BOA 694-028, 33 Woodlawn. Name and address for the record. Just for the record, this expired, this will expire on 11/6 of 2020. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard Lins, 245 Sundar Street, on behalf of petitioner Peter Keen. Mr. Chairman, we are all but ready to move forward with permit on this. This has been through the BPDA design review process. We are working out one building code issue. We are expecting to have that resolved in the coming weeks and to proceed with permits for both of these projects.
Have, Mr. Lins, have you requested an extension on this project before?
We have not.
Okay, and it expires, Mr. Fortune, November 6th?
Of 2020, correct. So I'm going to make the motion for a one-year extension from the date of 2020, 11/6.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You're all set.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 835-828-277, Border Street. This expired on December 14th of 2020. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, Richard Lins, 245 Sundar Street, on behalf of MG2 Group. This is a request for a one-year extension. Mr. Chairman, this project was approved back in 2018 for 18 residential units in East Boston. Partial construction has already begun with demolition of the existing building. We are finalizing a few items with respect to the building permit, but this is, this is moving forward. But in abundance of caution, we wanted to just make sure we had the request in timely for the extension of the approvals. This is the first extension.
Well, it was issued in 2018, so for two years, and expires when?
December 14th, 2020.
Okay, and you obviously must have gotten a demo permit, right?
That is correct, but that would be a separate permit from.
Yeah, I understand that, separate permits. Okay, so, and you have not yet, and you don't think you'll get the building permit for the expiration of this, of this two-year window, correct?
We're optimistic but cautious. I just want to make sure that we get this request in time.
All right, can I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion for an extension for one year from 12/14 of 2020.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the motion carries.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 819-243-806-SARAToga. There's companion case, BOA 819-227-96-Wordsworth, Wordsworth Street. Mr. Chair, these are also set to expire on November 6th of 2020. Name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, Ed Devoe, I'm going to recuse myself on this. I know it's just an extension, but I'm going to recuse myself on the vote.
Okay, so that means there's five of us, so we, I will, I will vote on the motion if, if we, in order to have a quorum. Go ahead, Mr. Lins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With respect to this matter, this was approved by the board back in September of 2018, entered in the Inspection Services Department on November 6th, expiring this November 6th. This would be the first extension request. Similar to the Woodlawn project, there are a couple of building code issues we are working through, but the project will be moving forward. I believe the BPDA designer group has already been completed as well.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion for a one-year extension from November 6th of 2020.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Not voting in favor as well. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Calling the next case, a board final arbiter, calling BOA 103-784-34-PAINSTREET. Name and address, pull the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mark LaCasse-Lacasse-Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the applicant. This project was approved by the board in February of this year and had a proviso for BPDA design review, as well as we had to go to the Boston Parks and Recreation Department for their design review because the property abuts on the right-hand side, McMorro Playground, which was a large baseball park owned by DCR. We went to BPDA for design review. They deferred to the Parks Department. We had a hearing in June of 2020 with the Parks Department, and they wanted us to move the building a little bit further back up Pain Street. So if you're seeing on the site plan here, on the left-hand side of the site plan is the property boundary with the McMorro Playground. This board approved a side yard setback of six inches, but in response to the Parks Department request, we've pushed that side of the building back, so now we're increasing the side yard setback from six inches to five feet. No other changes to the previous approvals, so we're enhancing the setback as previously approved by this board, specifically in response to Boston Parks and Recreation Design Review, as well as BPDA Design Review has been approved on that subject as well. That's the sole item.
So is LaCasse-Lacasse-Law, the entire building has moved over four and a half feet, or is the building smaller by four and a half feet?
The whole building moved up the hill, if you will. So on the other side, the setback was 26, and now it's about 19, but the minimum required is 10, so we're still very much compliant on the other side. So we just scooted it up the hill a bit.
Okay, so there's, so there were no other, no other variances required as a result of the change?
Correct, no, no other zoning items implicated. We're just enhancing the previously approved side yard setback.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to call the 930 cases for deferrals or withdrawals. If you have a case that's going to be deferred or withdrawn, could you please give me the address before you speak, please? Thank you.
243 Princeton Street.
For the record, calling BOA 110-6912, 243 Princeton Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with an address of 11 Beacon Street. Here on behalf of the petitioner, seeking a deferral. We heard from both the counselor's office and the mayor's office, they would like us to have one additional abutters meeting, just to go over some concerns due to COVID. Some folks apparently were not able to meet at the Eagle Hills Civic Association or come out for those meetings, so we are seeking a deferral.
Counselor, I got a quick question for you.
Yes.
Letter in the file here that the applicant passed away. Am I direct in hearing that?
Passed away? I'm sorry, is that?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, so there's a letter in the file for some reason, it just says that the applicant is deceased, passed away, so I'm glad he's not, or he, she's not.
So the applicant is, I'm not sure. Yeah, no, no, the applicant is alive. So no, I don't know where that came from.
We're, we're very glad we're able to resurrect the applicant. Can I, can I have a motion for deferral?
Mr. Drago, Mr. Drago, is it the homeowner that passed, or no? Nobody passed?
So I represent the applicant. I don't, I don't know who the homeowner is. This is, actually, no, 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 I'm sorry. No, 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 the homeowner is the applicant, so absolutely not. That's, that's not correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Motion for deferral?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
You had a, you have a date of January 12th?
Thank you.
At 1:00.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary.
Are there any deferrals or withdrawals? Address, please.
32 Orleans.
Call BOA 105-0291, 32 Orleans Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard Lins, 245 Sundar Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Mr. Chairman, we understand that there is an additional violation that had not been cited in the public notice, so we need to re-note this, and we're requesting an expeditions deferral on this.
Mr. Chair, again, if I could, Ed Devoe, I apologize for not chiming in soon, I'm going to recuse myself on this as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Devoe. What is the additional violation, Mr. Lins?
Rear yard setback.
Okay, and why was that not cited the first time?
I'm unsure. We did submit a updated set of drawings to the, to the plans examiner, and it was raised in the subsequent review.
Okay, all right, can I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to call the 930 cases for deferrals or withdrawals. If you have a case that's going to be deferred or withdrawn, could you please give me the address before you speak, please? Thank you.
243 Princeton Street.
For the record, calling BOA 110-6912, 243 Princeton Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with an address of 11 Beacon Street. Here on behalf of the petitioner, seeking a deferral. We heard from both the counselor's office and the mayor's office, they would like us to have one additional abutters meeting, just to go over some concerns due to COVID. Some folks apparently were not able to meet at the Eagle Hills Civic Association or come out for those meetings, so we are seeking a deferral.
Counselor, I got a quick question for you.
Yes.
Letter in the file here that the applicant passed away. Am I direct in hearing that?
Passed away? I'm sorry, is that?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, so there's a letter in the file for some reason, it just says that the applicant is deceased, passed away, so I'm glad he's not, or he, she's not.
So the applicant is, I'm not sure. Yeah, no, no, the applicant is alive. So no, I don't know where that came from.
We're, we're very glad we're able to resurrect the applicant. Can I, can I have a motion for deferral?
Mr. Drago, Mr. Drago, is it the homeowner that passed, or no? Nobody passed?
So I represent the applicant. I don't, I don't know who the homeowner is. This is, actually, no, 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 I'm sorry. No, 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 the homeowner is the applicant, so absolutely not. That's, that's not correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Motion for deferral?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
You have a date, you have a date of January 12th?
Thank you.
At 1:00.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary.
Are there any deferrals or withdrawals? Address, please.
32 Orleans.
Call BOA 105-0291, 32 Orleans Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard Lins, 245 Sundar Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Mr. Chairman, we understand that there is an additional violation that had not been cited in the public notice, so we need to re-note this, and we're requesting an extradition deferral on this.
Mr. Chair, again, if I could, Ed Devoe, I apologize for not chiming in soon, I'm going to recuse myself on this as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Devoe. What is the additional violation, Mr. Lins?
Rear yard setback.
Okay, and why was that not cited the first time?
I'm unsure. We did submit a updated set of drawings to the, to the plans examiner, and it was raised in the subsequent review.
Okay, all right, can I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries.
The date is January 12th, 2021.
Thank you. I have 324 Sundar.
Okay, pull the record, calling BOA 106-84783, 24 Sundar Street. Name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard Lins, 245 Sundar Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Again, requesting a brief deferral. We were advised that an additional violation was raised relative to basement unit, and that was not included in the notice. We're asking for a brief deferral, so it can be re-note.
Okay, again, what, what is the additional violation?
I believe it was basement unit forbidden. We are proposing a garden level unit, but that was not raised in the original review. Nothing, some plans was filed. The examiner had added that to the refusal, and in order for public notice to be correct, we feel that it's appropriate to be re-note.
Okay, all right, can I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries.
The earliest we can get anybody in, I just want to let everybody know, you're into January dates, there's no, we are full up to the, to the end of the year. So you have January 12th at 1:00. Thank you.
655 Saratoga Street, Mr. Secretary?
Yes, hold on two seconds. For the record, calling BOA 102-055, 655 Saratoga Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Matt Echols, attorney of Gonzano, with the business address of 11 Beacon Street, on behalf of the applicant. We are seeking a deferral this morning at the advice of the Mayor of Southern Services. We'd like to conduct, conduct an additional abutters meeting, so this time we're seeking a deferral.
And what is the reason for, what's the need for the additional abutters meeting?
There has been further discussion with some of the direct abutters on certain easement issues, and we'd just like to clarify that, go with the Mayor of Southern Services, as well as finalize it with the abutters, so we are ready to proceed.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries.
You have a date of January 12th at 1:00.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Mr. Ambassador, any hands up?
Mr. Clerk, there are no hands raised.
Okay, I'm going to call the first case for 930, calling BOA 105-6755, 141 Falcon Street. This is a change of occupancy from a two-family to a three-family residential dwelling, erect in addition, erect two dormers, and extend living space into the basement. The violation of Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 56, R-street parking is insufficient. Article 53, Section 52, roof structure restrictions. Article 53, Section 8, the use is forbidden. Article 27T, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 53, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. And Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard Lins, 245 Sundar Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner, Creswell Holdings LLC. Mr. Chairman, this is a pre-existing non-conforming structure located in the Eagle Hills section of East Boston. The proposal would involve a complete rehabilitation of the existing structure and a change of occupancy from two units to three units. The reprogramming of the building would result in two three-bedroom, two-bath units and one, one-bedroom, one and a half bath, and we do have some slides here that we can share with the board. The unit sizes, as we're just scanning through here, will range from about 835 square feet for the one-bedroom, up to about 1135 square feet for the three-bedroom. With respect to the zoning violations that are cited, this is in the 2F2000 district. Our proposal to change the occupancy to three would be a forbidden use. We feel that based upon the character of this particular neighborhood, this is not a use that would be offensive to the specific neighborhood, and this was met very, very well by the community based upon the proposed changes that we're looking to make with respect to the, to the project. I can run through briefly some of the, you can stop at the slide right here. With respect to the side yard, as I mentioned, this is already a pre-existing non-conforming structure. The required side yard typically in the 2F2000 district is 2.5 feet. When you are proposing a use that is in excess of the allowed use, you are required to increase your side yard to five feet. While we're not changing anything with respect to the main footprint of the building, the proposed dormers would be within the five-foot setback, and therefore, a side yard violation was cited. With respect to the rear yard, this is a shallow lot. Article 53 does have a shallow lot exception. While the required setback would be at 23.75 feet, we are proposing a rear about 20 feet. We are making substantial changes to the rear portion of the property, including outdoor space that would be accessible to, to the lower units. Behind the building, in the 2F2000 district, we are permitted to have up to 35 feet in height. We aren't changing the overall height of the building, but the dormers being added to the building would certainly change the character from a two-and-a-half-story to arguably a three-story building. We feel that the design, based upon the input that we received from the Eagle Hills Civic Association of Neighbors, is consistent with the architecture in the neighborhood, and therefore, this, this could be granted without serious deridation from the purpose and intent of the zoning code. With respect to our floor-to-air ratio, 0.8 is the maximum that's allowed. We are proposing an increase up to 1.39. There is already a non-conforming, non-conforming condition existing on the site already, and therefore, we're requesting a variance for the increase in the FAR. Last, but not least, is the parking. While this is a pre-existing two-family dwelling, there are no parking, there is no parking associated with the site. The increase from two to three units would result in a requirement under the zoning code of one additional parking space. Uh, with respect to the basement, I am told by the architect who is on the call that the clear ceiling height in the basement will be seven feet, six inches upon completion, and we have provided elevations with respect to that. I'm happy to answer any questions of the board.
Okay, um, yeah, Colette, can you keep, uh, going through the plans? Um, okay, um, how far does the rear addition extend beyond the current, uh, edge, uh, back edge of the house?
Uh, I believe, is it the Tree or Sharon on the call? If we could, it's probably, probably right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what we're showing here on the existing conditions plan, Mr. Chairman, uh, you do have a narrow portion of the, the, uh, rear, rear portion of the structure. There is an existing deck. Uh, we are not extending beyond what the existing, um, plane of the rear portion of the building is. We are improving, uh, the rear portion of the property with the patio and the common lawn garden. There will be some stairwells that will lead to, to both the patio and the, uh, the common area to the rear of the building. Uh, so there really isn't much of an increase beyond, uh, the rear plane. We do increase somewhat on the side, left side of the building, uh, but again, we work closely with the public to the left on ensuring that the design was consistent with what their expectations would be for this redesign.
Okay, and what is, what is the use of the basement gonna be?
Uh, that will be, uh, pertinent to the first level, so that'll be exclusive space for, uh, for unit one. We're showing the existing plan here, where you can go to the next slide that will show the layout for, I think it's the following slide after this, this is the existing conditions as well. There we go. So we do show our master bedroom, master bath, uh, some laundry and mechanicals as well in the basement. That is part of unit one.
And, and, and what is the, uh, basement, uh, how far is it below grade?
Uh, I believe that the, I, I know from the elevations, the clear ceiling height is seven feet, six inches upon completion, uh, and I, I, I know that's noted on one of the elevation plans that the architect put forward.
Well, no, I, I realize you already said that, that's not what I was asking. I was asking how far it is below grade because I wanna know what the floor to the, uh, window sill is.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I, um, I believe we're, uh, within the, I think it's forty, within forty inches of the, of the, um, opening.
Okay, how, how are the drawings, Mr. Kandell?
Drawings are good.
Okay, uh, and the egress from the, uh, the basement?
Um, is Tree or Sharon on the call? We can explore that.
Tree, I'm, I'm gonna throw now.
Hi, yes, we have a, a single means of egress out of the basement, which is, um, to code.
Okay, so there's a interior stair to the first floor and then, uh, and then a single means of egress. Um, all right, how are the, uh, utilities accessed for the second unit?
Through the, sorry, through the, um, through a common area, um, stairwell in the rear of the building.
Okay. Okay. Um, all right, uh, is anyone here to testify in support of the applicant?
Good morning, uh, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Lisa Sharif, with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Mayor's office on record in support of this proposal. Uh, they work with both their neighbors and also the Eagle Hills Civic Association on amending the designs, uh, and the neighborhood is in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, secretary here. We have twenty-five letters of support, no letters of opposition.
Okay, is anyone here to speak in opposition or, or, or support? Madam Ambassador, are there any raised hands?
Mr. Clark, there's no raised hands.
Okay, is, is, uh, Jeff Hampton from the BPDA on the, uh, call?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Uh, Jeff is, uh, covering another issue today, so this is Brian Glascock for Boston Planning and Development Agency. Uh, the agency recommends, uh, denial without prejudice. Our concerns were that, um, although the ground floor footprint is similar to what exists today, the lot coverage proposed is excessive, uh, would substantially impact the rear yard condition of the adjacent property, and we recommend that the proponent should consider reducing the building mass by introducing a greater rear yard setback.
Okay, so, look, Brian, let me ask you about that, because that's why I asked Mr. Lynn about, uh, about the addition. Uh, my understanding is that the addition, uh, the, the backside of the rear yard addition is no further than the existing rear deck and the rear plane of the house. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
I mean...
That, that is correct. We're expand, we're expanding that volume at the rear on the sides by three foot three.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so that's why...
So, uh, so the lot, it's not so much that it's an encroachment as, than it's expanding the, the, the volume back there, uh, so there's, there's more lot coverage.
Right, the volume that's being expanded is, uh, three feet to the side, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, the direct abutter to the left, I, I believe is, um, I believe the chair is very familiar with it, so Mr. Maranti. Uh, we worked very closely with Mr. Maranti and his partner on designing that. There were some initial concerns and objections over the original plan. Uh, we've worked closely, and he was, uh, completely satisfied with the end result.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chair, are you able to hear me?
Pardon me?
Can you, can you hear me? Sorry, this is Ricardo Petrum from the Office of Counsel Edwards.
Please.
The counsel would also like to go on record in support. Sorry, I was having audio issues earlier.
Okay, thank you for your testimony, Ricardo. Um, okay, well, given, given the level of support, uh, can I have a, uh, motion from, from the board?
Uh, I'm gonna go with a motion to approve. Do we need BPDA design review?
I believe so, given the, uh, given the addition.
Okay, so motion approved with BPD.
I'll, I'll second that.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. Calling the next case, calling BOA 106-9147, two thirty-five Condor Street. This is to combine lots, create a new lot consisting of four-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-five square feet and erect a six-unit residential dwelling with two parking spaces for the, for six vehicles. The violation is Article twenty-seventeen dash five, it's in the East Boston iPod. Article fifty-three, section fifty-six, off-street parking loading. Article fifty, Article fifty-three, section eight, the MFR is forbidden in a two-F-two-thousand sub-district. Article fifty-three, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-three, section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Article fifty-three, section nine, the building height is excessive in feet. Article fifty-three, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. And Article fifty-three, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard Lins, two forty-five Sunder Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, uh, with me is Shane Losi, who's the architect for Chewing Company, uh, for this particular project. Um, Mr. Chairman, this is a pre-existing, these are two lots, actually, pre-existing, uh, five units with three parking spaces, uh, located in the lower, uh, probably more Chelsea Creek section of Eagle Hill. Um, if you leave it at that slide right here, we can get a pretty good look at what we're looking at by way of context. Um, the buildings that we're talking about are the two-story, uh, white building here in the front of Condor, and then a three-unit building located to the rear portion of the property on a separate lot. Uh, the parking is sort of arranged, uh, in between, uh, the existing building to the right, uh, and then the, um, the buildings that exist on the site. Um, this section of Condor Street, Mr. Chairman, even though it is in the two-F-two-thousand district, uh, had a lot of different uses, uh, happening. Uh, there has been substantial change with a, um, the occupancy, uh, industrial uses eliminated, uh, with more emphasis on residential and mixed-use buildings, uh, being approved up and down the corridor. Immediately adjacent to this site is an auto repair site. Uh, there was a garage previously to the left side, as you can see in the, uh, photo here, there's a four-story building, six-unit with six parking spaces, uh, that was recently constructed and is nearing completion, uh, presently. Our proposal would, uh, uh, also propose a four-story, uh, six-unit building with six parking spaces. Uh, this would all, this would consist of all two-bed plus two-baths, uh, ranging at about thirteen hundred square feet per unit. Uh, each of these units, uh, would have one parking space associated with it. Uh, with respect to the zoning, uh, issues that are raised, uh, this minimum lot size in the district is two-thousand. Combined, we would have forty-three-hundred-and-seventy-five square feet, and therefore would combine. The required lot width is twenty-five feet, we would have fifty, uh, and therefore in compliance as well. Uh, our side yard varies, uh, there is, uh, three feet, roughly three feet each side, uh, with a one-foot setback at the lower left side for where the garage is located. The requirement is a five-foot setback when you exceed, uh, two units on any single lot at Article fifty-three. Our front yard setback would be setback as a modal setback, consistent with the setbacks along that section, Condor Street. Um, we are proposing, uh, a, a rear yard setback that ranges from about two-point-five feet at the lower level where the garage is located, up to about ten foot when you move up the building, uh, at the upper levels. I would point out that the existing condition, Mr. Chairman, of the existing structure, uh, is at a zero-foot setback presently, so we would be improving that condition, so the existing structure that is there, uh, housing the three units sits on the rear property line. Uh, our building height is forty feet at four stories. Two-point-five stories, thirty-five feet is the maximum. Uh, I would point out that although not bound by precedent, uh, certainly the, uh, changing, um, um, streetscape along Condor Street, uh, has favored, uh, uh, structures, uh, that, that are higher and certainly at the four-story level. Um, our floor-to-air ratio is at two-point-three-seven, uh, which is in excess of the point eight that is allowed. Uh, there is already a pre-existing non-conforming condition on the site, so we'd be requesting relief for the difference between what exists now, uh, to the two-point-three-seven that's being proposed. Uh, when you're proposing anything more than two units in the two-F district, there is no open space requirement, uh, and therefore, uh, that is not applicable. Uh, and with respect to parking, uh, we would have a total of, a requirement of, uh, eight spaces under the code. Uh, we are proposing six. This is intended for a condo homeownership, and therefore one space would be assigned, uh, to each individual unit. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions of the board.
Um, yeah, I'm looking for the, uh, slide that shows the parking.
Uh, that would be back, uh, back two slides, I believe, two or three slides. There we go. So the entrance is on the right side of the building, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we are showing an elevator and lobby area towards the front of the building, and then we have the six spaces, uh, arranged, three to the side and three to the rear, with storage for, uh, uh, trash receptacles and, uh, bicycles located between, uh, two of the spaces.
Okay, and, and, okay, that's the floor plan. Can you show an elevation that shows the, uh, the garage opening, the access to the parking?
Sure. Uh, if we can go... Yep, and we've indicated a glass garage door, so it's, uh, completely translucent, um, based upon the comments that we hear regularly from the board. Relentless, Mr. Chairman.
You, you know I was looking for that one, so...
We answer the test before it's given.
Yeah, uh, glad to hear we're having some impact on cer, on certain architectural forms.
Yeah, and no roof deck, Mr. Chairman. There is, uh, an elevator overrun that is shown, uh, but there is no roof deck, uh, being proposed with respect to that.
Right, well, the, the headhouse is for the, uh, for the elevator, clearly.
That's correct.
Okay, how are the drawings, Mr. Kandell?
Drawings are fine.
Okay. Um, is there anyone here to speak in, uh, in favor of the project?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Lisa Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The Mayor's office will be going on record in support of the proposal. They do have support from their neighbors. My colleague, Nina Trummeli, held in a butters meeting, uh, back in late July on this proposal, uh, and they also received support from the Eagle Hills Civic Association. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, secretary here. We have two letters of support, no letters of opposition.
Mr. Chair, I have one raised hand.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Brian Glascock for Boston Planning and Development Agency. Our recommendation is, uh, denial. We had some concerns about, again, the excessive lot coverage, and we asked that the proponent consider reducing the building mass, uh, introduce a greater rear yard setback and, and limit the appearance of height, uh, of the building on the, on the street facade, uh, the fourth floor, uh, some additional articulation there to, to sort of reduce the, um, impact of the height on the street.
Um, Colette, could you show the, uh, elevation so we can see, uh, what Mr. Glascock was talking about?
We'll plug it in.
All right, I mean, it looks like pretty straightforward for stories with a, uh, with a, is it a mansard roof there?
Yeah, it's, it's a lot of modified mansard, Mr. Chairman, and one of the things that we've done, uh, is to try to take, and again, I, I understand it's not bound by precedent, but, um, there is an auto repair shop immediately to the right. Uh, there are a number of projects along this section of Condor Street that have been, uh, supported by the Eagle Hill Civic Association of Four Stories, uh, and the reason being is that Falcon Street, which immediately, uh, runs parallel behind, uh, is upgraded from this site, so a four-story, uh, building actually has, uh, lesser impact on the Falcon Street, uh, properties directly behind it.
Well, I, 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 I understand all that, I'm just trying to get to Mr. Glascock's concern. It looks like a pretty straightforward four-story building to me, and so when the BPDA is calling for limiting the height to four stories, I, um, what is, what is the exact concern?
Could, could we jump back to the...
Whoa, 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 I'm asking, I'm asking Mr. Glascock.
Um, I think the, uh, urban design team's concern was, um, reducing the appearance of the, of the fourth, fourth story. So some additional, um, uh, articulation at above the cornice line, uh, maybe different fenestration, maybe, um, uh, a more of a, a setback or a deeper setback to the mansard, something that begins to break up that, uh, the fourth story. Um, I, I do agree, there is a precedent in the building just to the left, uh, that seems to not have any of those elements, but that's, that was the urban design team's recommendation.
All right, so that seems to be something that could be handled in, uh, design review. Okay, um, uh, can I have a motion, please?
Motion approved with BPDA design review.
I'll second that, Devoe.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
You're opposed?
Yep.
Okay, um, then I will vote in favor, so there's, uh, there are five votes that carry the motion. Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 106-9837, one fifty-nine to one sixty-five Everett Street. This is to combine lots, create one lot, erase the existing building, erect a seven-unit residential dwelling, roof decks and parking for eight vehicles. Violation Article fifty-three, section fifty-six, insufficient off-street parking. Article fifty-three, section fifty-six, off-street parking requirements maneuvering areas. Article fifty-three, section fifty-seven, traffic visibility across the corner lot. Article twenty-seventeen dash five in the East Boston iPod. Article fifty-three, section eight, use is forbidden. Article fifty-three, section nine, insufficient additional lot area per unit. Article fifty-three, section nine, excessive FAR. Article fifty-three, section nine, the number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article fifty-three, section nine, the maximum allowed height has been exceeded. Article fifty-three, section nine, sufficient open space per unit. Article fifty-three, section nine, insufficient rear yard setback. And Article fifty-three, section nine, the location of the main entrance. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, Richard Lins, two forty-five Sunder Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, um, this project, uh, is located in Jeffries Point section of East Boston. Uh, as the secretary indicated, we are proposing to, uh, demolish the existing structure, uh, a pre-existing non-conforming structure, uh, as well as the garage that's located immediately adjacent to it. Our proposal, uh, is for a seven-unit dwelling, uh, with eight parking spaces, uh, the spa, the parking spaces would include tandem parking, and I could explain a little bit of how we arrived at that. Uh, this would involve the combination of two lots, uh, one, uh, located at the corner of Hooton Court and Everett Street, and the other, uh, located on Everett Street. As you can see here, Mr. Chairman, the existing structure is the one, uh, with the yellow siding and the brick at the lower level. Uh, there is a garage located immediately to the right that is, um, uh, underutilized, obviously, um, and those would completely be cleared, combined with a lot located immediately to the left, uh, for the proposed seven-unit dwelling. If we could skip to the next, uh, slide? Just a different view of the neighborhood. Um, so here, here is what we have, uh, for the, uh, proposed, um, finished product for the seven units. Uh, and again, a couple of things I'm gonna point out here is, um, based upon our, uh, community process with the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association, uh, which ultimately with the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association, which ultimately voted to support this revised proposal, we actually modified this building a number of times. We were showing parking, Mr. Chairman, in this corner, this corner condition located at Hooton Court, where we do have windows now. Probably one of the fewer times when we were asked to increase the number of proposed units originally. We were at six units with more parking. We've eliminated some parking as a corner, increased and added a seventh unit to allow for accessibility and for a somewhat more affordable sized unit, that would be a studio unit located at the lower level. The desire was to see a, see more activation at the ground level with a unit rather than having all parking at the lower level, so this is one of the changes that we had made as part of this process. You can go to the next slide. A different view, just looking down Everett Street, and we do show the garage doors. This is part of the rendering, but I have confirmed with Chew &amp; Company that those will be completely translucent doors, again, consistent with the requests by the board. One of the other conditions that we have here is in the upper level of this portion of the building located closest to the triple decker to the right. We do push that fourth level back a bit and create an outdoor balcony space to try to bring the massing of that section of the building down to be more consistent with the line of Everett Street. Can you go to the next slide? I'm going to try to show the parking at lower level. So we do show parking, and again, as I indicated, this was a tandem condition, even though we are proposing seven units. A couple of issues that were raised, we indicated that it is somewhat of a challenge in a condominium setting to have tandem spaces assigned to individual units. Our decision or intention was to have two of the spaces, or four spaces, if you will, assigned to specific units based upon the desire of people purchasing units. We did hear feedback from some in the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association, including those who live in condo buildings that have a tandem arrangement, and they say it's not impossible to do that. We're happy to explore those options, but we are proposing this as eight, total of eight tandem spots.
Okay, let's stop right there, Mr. Lenz, a minute. So you've got two garage doors, which already raises one question. How, I can't, the first time I'm looking at the plans, how wide is the curb cut?
I believe we're showing, I think it's 16 feet.
16 feet for two garage doors, and then you've got tandem spaces, each one assigned to a unit. So if someone in the rear wants to get out, if someone in the back left wants to get out, there are two, possibly three cars that have to move in order for them to do that, correct?
My understanding is that these tandem spots would each have the ability to get out of the spaces individually. I don't know if David Freed from Chew &amp; Company is on.
That would be magic. Can you explain that?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Bob D'Amico has spoke on this. I just want to put his record, his comments into the record. He's asking to deny parking because it doesn't work.
Well, let's hear from the architect.
Madam Host, are you able to elevate David Freed to panelist?
I'm sorry, what's his first name?
It would be David Freed.
Yeah, thank you. David. I don't see a David Freed.
If he was supposed to be on.
I mean, quite honestly, Mr. Lenz, I'm not quite sure how we can proceed without an answer to this. It seems, at least on the face of it, it seems completely unmanageable. You know, I would tend to agree with Mr. D'Amico. It, I don't see how it works.
Mr. Clark, is Christopher with you, Mr. Lenz?
I'm sorry, who's it?
Christopher?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Not sure. Mr. Chair, I apologize. I thought David Freed was on the call and would be able to explain the parking or how the parking maneuver will be worked, but...
Okay, I mean, given, you know, this is quite an upgrade in density, and this parking is critical to the project, so I would ask the board for a motion to defer until we can get the architect on the call.
I appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, again, I apologize. I usually have everybody on the call.
I'll make a motion to defer. All votes in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Again, we're not, we don't have anything in 2020, so we're into 2021, so you have January 12th.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 109 7299 323 Maverick Street. This is seeking to raise the existing structure and erect a three-family residential dwelling with three parking spaces. Violation Article 27T, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient lot area per unit. Article 53, Section 9, the number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article 53, Section 9, the maximum allowed height has been exceeded. Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient open space per unit. Article 53, Section 56, designed parking space is clear access. Article 53, Section 56.5, off-street parking maneuverability. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Donna with an address of 11 Beacon Street here on behalf of petitioner. We also have Jonathan Garland as the architect in the project, who should also be on the call. This proposed project is to raise the existing...
Jeff, one second. Mr. Chair, just now, Cindell, I just want to recuse myself.
Okay, Mr. Cindell is recusing himself, which means it's a five-member board. Mr. Drago, do you want to go ahead? That means ask me now, so...
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll go forward. Thank you.
Okay. Colette, that means, that means we all need to look at the plans a little bit carefully on the screen since Mr. Cindell's review won't be available. Go ahead, Mr. Drago.
So the proposal is to raise the existing structure, which is an outdated, single-story structure that's in a sort of a mixed-use area. There's threes and fours and five stories around us, and to erect a new four-story condominium residential building with four units. This is located in the Jeffries Point section of East Boston. You can see in the picture in front of you, the arrow is the existing house where it stands next to a lot on one side and a three-unit building on the right. The zone is a 3F 2000 district. The lot size is 2,438 square feet, and just to go over our floor plans, you can see these are more front images of the building on the screen now.
So, Mr. Drago, what are we looking at right now?
So what you're looking at right now is the existing structure next to an existing three-story building. That's an existing plan. That's an existing picture of the building and lot.
Yeah, no, so is the site, the one on the left, the two-story one?
Yes, correct.
Oh, okay.
I can go over the floor plans now. The ground floor will have a unit, so that would house unit one. It's 1,021 square foot, two-bed, two-bath, that's fully accessible unit. That was, as we're going through this process, we made sure that unit was accessible. Our second-floor unit is 1135, 1,135 square foot, two-bed, two-bath. It has front, small front patio on it as well. There, just to point out, all of these would have a rear egress stair in the back of the building, along with being fully sprinkled. The third floor is, has a 1,135 square foot, two-bed, two-bath, similar as to the other unit, front patio, rear egress. And then finally, the fourth floor, one unit, 1,135 square foot, two-bed, two-bath, mirrors the downstairs unit with front porch and rear egress. Our zoning violations that were mentioned, so this is a 3F district, although there's multifamily up and down across from us, there's an apartment condo building, and we are proposing four, so that triggers a use violation. Additional lot area would be required for a 1,000. We have 438 additional square feet, so slightly under. Our FAR, we're proposing 2.2, what's allowable is one. Our height, it's three-story, 35-foot district. We are proposing four-story at 39 feet, but we kept the building at the same height as our neighbor next door in the front, although he has a bump-up, but we mirrored that in this picture. You can see that nicely. We are not, sorry, front yard, we're at two and a half feet, five is required. Open space, we're required to have 300 square feet per dwelling unit, and we have 250 square feet per dwelling unit for a total of 1,000 square feet. Our side yard is a pre-existing violation on the right, which is zero. We do have a three-foot setback on the left. And then our parking, so because we kept, we had a large rear yard, we didn't put parking on the interior to keep that unit accessible. We do not create any parking. Just to point out, we are about a five-minute walk to Maverick and Airport T Station, and across from us is Massports Property, so there's resident parking directly across the street. We did, and I just have to point out, Mr. Chair, we submitted 32 letters of support, and the only reason I mention it is apparently this, I spoke to the ZBA today, they, those could not make it in the file yet, but they're holding them, along with the Mayor's Office and the City Councilor's Office.
Okay.
So I can answer any questions.
So, so the ground, when you say ground-level unit, you're literally meaning ground level. Is there a basement in the building?
There is not, Mr. Chair, so all of the utilities are in each unit.
Okay, okay. All right, and so we can't ask Mr. Cindell about the plans. Any questions on the board? All right, is anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighbourhood Services. The Mayor's Office is on record in support of this proposal. They do have support from Butters. Mr. Drago referenced a couple of dozen of support letters that our office has received. They've also received support from the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would also like to go on the record in support of this proposal. Our office did receive letters of support from Butters, as well as the inclusion of the ADA unit was important, so we'd like to go on the record in support. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Brian Glasscock from Boston Planning and Development. Our agency recommends approval with a design review proviso, particularly interested in both that, again, the fourth-story street facade articulation, as well as the sideyard condition that's shared with 234 Everett Street.
Mr. Chair?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Karen Fowler, the Council of Assembly, Georgie's office. Would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Mr. Fortune, could you...
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Secretary. Secretary here, we have one letter of support, but I just want to get a correction from the Mayor's Office because we have a letter of opposition from the Jeffries Point. 15 residents voting in favor and 20 voting in opposition.
Mr. Sharif, can you, do you know what I mean about that?
So our recollection was that they were in support of this proposal. If there's, you know, if there's a letter that was submitted more recently to the board, I mean, we defer to the board, what's on your mind, but they do support letters, both from neighbors and, again, when this was discussed at the association. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Clark?
Mr. Chair, it's dated October 1st.
Okay, does it state reasons for opposition, Mr. Fortune?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Does it state any reasons for opposition?
Residents opposed on proposal expressed concerns objected to the height of the building and objected to the conversion of a single-family dwelling to a four-unit condo with no parking.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I have Andrew Pike from Jeffries Point.
Okay.
And a couple other raised hands. Do you mind if I unmute Mr. Pike?
No, please do.
Hi, Andrew, you're unmuted.
Thank you very much, Ayesha. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my name is Andrew Pike of 128 Webster Street in East Boston, and I am here representing the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association. It is correct, our organization did vote against this project with a vote of 15 in favor and 20 opposed. The reasons residents gave opposing the project were residents' objection to the height of the building. However, we would like to note that following the vote to oppose by the neighborhood, the developer did reduce the height of the building to garner support from the Butters. Residents objected also to the conversion from a single-family dwelling to a four-unit condominium building with no parking. This will increase the pressure for parking in a neighborhood where on-street parking is already very scarce.
Okay, so, but what you're telling us is that the vote in opposition was prior to some design changes?
To my knowledge, it was, the only design change was the reduction in the height of the building.
Okay, thank you.
I have other raised hands, Mr. Clark.
Okay, go ahead.
Mark, you're unmuted.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, my name is Mark Lenzile. I own 138 Marginal Street in East Boston, and I support the project of 323 Maverick Street.
Thank you.
Andrea, you're unmuted.
Hi, how are you? I'm Andrea. I live in East Boston and Jeffries Point. I would agree with what the members said. Most residents are opposed to demolishing a single family to convert into a higher-density area, and I was just, would like the Mayor's Office also to correct their support letters for various projects that have been previously brought up. The other one in East Boston that was just mentioned and approved was denied.
I'm sorry, excuse me, but we've already acted on...
Okay, that's good. I just...
No, 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 please restrict your comments to 323 Maverick.
I had my hand raised, and I would like to speak when I have my hand raised to comment on the project. Thank you.
Okay, well, I apologize that you aren't recognized at the time, but we are now talking about 323 Maverick.
Mr. Clark, I mean, excuse me, Mr. Chair, do you want me to continue with public comment?
Well, how many, how many additional hands are raised?
One more.
Yeah, go ahead.
Randall, you're unmuted.
Yeah, this is Randall DeRosa. I'm actually the butter of the project, and I do support the project.
What's your address, sir?
321 Maverick Street, next door to...
Okay, thank you. Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion for approval with BPDA. Do we need BPDA?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
All votes in opposition?
Aye.
Okay, I'm voting in favor, but given that there are only five of us on this, the motion fails, so the project is denied.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 106 5890 333 Maverick Street. This is a change of occupancy from a three-family dwelling to a four-family dwelling and reconfigured living space in the existing building. The rear steers has been replaced with decks and created an apartment basement, constructing new roof deck exclusive to the third-floor unit. The violation is Article 27 T-5, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 8, use of a basement apartment is forbidden. Article 53, Section 8, a multi-family dwelling is forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, the lot area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height, number of stories is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, side yard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 52, construction restriction. And Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard Lenz, 245 Thunder Street, on behalf of Crespo Holdings, LLC. Mr. Chairman, this is a pre-existing three-family dwelling located in the Jeffries Point section of East Boston. Our original proposal involved a vertical addition and the change of occupancy to four units. Throughout the community process, we heard concerns over height. We agreed to preserve the existing structure with the existing height, proposing only a roof deck. I believe the plan does show modified headhouse, but access will be by hatch now that we are not proposing a fourth-story level. Our, the reprogramming of this entire building would involve essentially the upgrade in renovations to the interior, as well as extending living space into the lower level. The grade for this existing building decreases as it goes towards the rear, which allows for a walkout for the additional unit that we're proposing. We understood that preservation of the existing structure and height was important, so what we see here is... This is located at 3F 2000 district, multi-family would be forbidden, although multi-families are relatively common in this section of Jeffries Point. We do meet the lot size at 2,666 square feet, 2,000 being the minimum. Our lot width also is in excess of the minimum required at 20 feet. Our sideyards are pre-existing conditions. We do not propose changing the footprint of the building, so those pre-existing non-contourneys would remain, especially with respect to the left side of the building. Again, with respect to the front yard, we aren't changing anything with respect to the front of the building, and therefore would comply with the code. Our rear yard would be conforming at 31.1 feet to the patio, 30 feet is the requirement. The height of our building, although we were cited for height, I believe that that is a legacy violation from when it was originally proposed as a four-story building. We are proposing to keep the height of this building, the only change would be the roof deck. To the extent that the decking of that deck exceeds 35 feet, that is the only relief we're looking for. The FAR that we're proposing is a 1.46 as modified. The existing condition is already in excess of one, so we're not conforming. Hopefully require variance for the difference to propose the total square footage that we have. We do have roughly about 285 square feet of open space per unit, and that would be as modified. And I believe we do have a landscape plan showing the courtyard that we're proposing to the rear. Because this is a pre-existing three-family dwelling, the addition of the fourth unit would trigger the parking violation for only one parking space, because the pre-existing condition would exempt any additional required parking. The units, the garden-level unit is a one-bed, one-bath, that is 800 square feet. We have an average of about a little over 1,000 square feet for each of the other units, three-bed, two-bath for each of them. And again, the desire to see larger units in the neighborhood, including more three bedrooms, was something that we regularly hear in the community, and that's one of the reasons why we proposed the size of the units that we have. Happy to hear any questions on the board.
Okay, so let me ask about the garden unit, which I think is a nice euphemism for a basement unit. Is this in the floodplain zone?
It is not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I, I understand from the BPDA comment that they think it is, and that living space should not be created below the base flood elevation.
I don't believe we were cited for it, Mr. Chairman, and I, my, my predilection to this section of Jeffries Point is this is outside of the flood zone.
Okay, let me ask, so the basement unit, we'll get to that in a minute, the basement unit, what's the floor-to-ceiling height?
Would be, finished would be eight feet.
Eight feet, and, and the, the elevations, the topography slopes, so at the front, it is access, it, there's a, you, on the rear, I'm sorry, you can access it from the, at the elevation, correct?
That's correct. There's a patio that's, that's created to the rear for egress through the living room, and then there's a means of egress up, up the stairwell to the main level. We do show utility and storage located at the front of the building, and that is access through the common stairwell to the basement, so separate utility and storage.
Okay, Collette, can you show an elevation so we can see what the grade is for the, for the basement? How are the plans, Mr. Kandell?
Plans are fine. I was gonna ask about the ceiling height in the basement and the obvious headhouse.
Yeah, we, we can, Ms. Folon, if you could go to further into the presentations closer to the end, that actually shows the elevations. Here we have it. So we are at the first floor at five feet, one inch above grade, and then below grade is three feet, nine inches, total of eight feet, ten inches, so the joists being ten inches, full eight-foot clear ceiling height.
Okay.
And again, we would be eliminating, we can access by hatch, so no need for the headhouse.
Okay. All right, any questions on the board? Is anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would also like to go on record in support of this proposal. We understand that there are concerns related to the height of the building when this was originally proposed at four stories. They have since agreed to maintain it at three stories at that additional unit in the basement, so we do support that change. We want to note that there was opposition from the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association who voted against the proposal. There's a larger concern around work that was done without proper permits, such as the headhouse, and also starting the foundation in the back without having received ISD approval. You know, the applicant contends that that was the previous owner, and so this has caused a few tensions between neighbors, but based on some of the design changes that they agreed to, we would like to go on record in support of the proposal. Thank you.
Wait, can I, Faisal, can I ask a question and clarify? Did you, you said, has a headhouse already been built?
That is outstanding.
Mr. Lynch, is that the case?
Mr. Chairman, I could, I could address that. So during the community process, there was a prior contractor who was working on renovating the building, started construction on the headhouse, that was brought, actually brought to my attention during the community process. The next morning, less than 12 hours after that, that headhouse was removed, and the contractor was terminated.
Okay. All right, is anyone else to testify either in favor or opposition?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Councillor, Lydia Edwards. The councillor would also like to go on the record in support of this proposal. As Mr. Sharif mentioned, most of the opposition during the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association process was regarding the headhouse, which has since been removed from the proposal. As a result, we would like to go on the record in support.
Mr. Fortune, do we, do you have any letters in support or opposition?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I was just waiting to see if anybody else was gonna go in there. There were nineteen letters of support, and we do have one letter of opposition. It's dated October 1st in the Jeffries Point, but it sounds like it's been taken care of.
Okay, and Madam Ambassador, are there any more raised hands?
Mr. Chair, I have three raised hands. I'm gonna, Andrew Pike from Jeffries Point, who represents Jeffries Point, I'm gonna have him go first.
Okay, before we take the testimony, can I have Mr. Glasscock talk about, I'm confused about the floodplain.
Sure.
Are we in it or not?
I believe that we're not in it, just with my familiarity of the area, but the plans reviewer, the urban design staff did raise that as an issue. Many parts of East Boston, particularly anytime we're talking about basement or garden-level apartments, you know, there's a concern that they'll, they'll be vulnerable to sea-level rise and additional flooding from, from coastal storms. So we just recommend that approval with the proviso that during design review, we're gonna spend, pay particular attention to the base flood elevation and the garden-level unit. It's a problem throughout many parts of East Boston, so it's pretty typical.
That's a problem throughout many parts of the city, but if it's not in the floodplain zone, I think it may be in excess of our mandate.
Agreed.
Okay, all right, Madam Ambassador, can you go ahead and unmute the people who want to testify?
Hi, Ayesha. Go ahead, Karen. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm not speaking. Sorry, Mr. Clerk. Making sure she's on mute. Andrew, please go.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, again, my name is Andrew Pike, 128 Webster Street in East Boston. I am here representing the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association. Our organization voted against this project with a vote of fourteen in favor and twenty-two opposed. As stated previously, there were some items regarding the headhouse and the height of the building due to the headhouse, which have been corrected, as well as the fact that the headhouse was built on the property prior to approval. There was, however, an additional objection. Residents did object to the addition of a basement unit, which will add congestion and increase the pressure on parking in a neighborhood where on-street parking is already scarce.
Okay, so the vote was taken prior to the removal of the headhouses?
Yes, at our voting meeting, it was made known that the headhouse was already built by one of our neighborhood residents, sending the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association Board photos of the headhouse that was built, so that it was made known at that time to the developer and their team.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. Andrew, you're unmuted.
I didn't have my hand raised, sorry.
Christopher, you're unmuted.
Hi, this is Chris Grove from 238 Webster Street. I'm going in favor for the developer in this project. I would like to see it be built and create much-needed living space in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, there are no raised hands, no other raised hands.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 1105, 134, 292 Princeton Street. There's a companion case, BOA 111, 5528, 294 Princeton Street. This is for 292, change of occupancy from a single-family dwelling to four-family dwelling. Violation Article 27T-5, the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 8, a basement apartment is forbidden. Article 53, Section 8, a multi-family dwelling is forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, the lot area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the sideyard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 52, restructuring restrictions. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. This is for 294 Princeton. This is to confirm the occupancy to a one-family dwelling, change of occupancy to a three-family residential dwelling. The rear addition and deck extend living space to the basement. The violation is Article 27T, East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 52, restructuring restrictions. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the sideyard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 52, restructuring restrictions. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. This is for 294 Princeton. This is to confirm the occupancy to a one-family dwelling, change of occupancy to a three-family residential dwelling. The rear addition and deck extend living space to the basement. The violation is Article 27T, East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 52, restructuring restrictions. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 53, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the sideyard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with an address of 11 Beacon Street, representing the petitioner, and we also have.
Excuse me, Mr. Drago, Collette, do we have plans that we can show on the screen? Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Drago.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just want to, there's been a number of changes with this project. The plans reflect the new plans and all of the changes. It was not reflected in what the secretary had just read. That was the old proposal. The new proposal, in working with the community, is to preserve both of the existing buildings and just build up and in the rear. We know that was something we worked on for the greater part of nine months with the community, so we are now.
Mr. Drago, just, whoa, 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 Collette, go back. That photo that you have.
Yes.
Which of the two, which of the two buildings?
Both of those buildings, so the one on the left, Mr. Chair, is 292. These are, that's the new proposed building, and the one on the left is 29, and the one on the right is 294.
Okay, so the dark brown is 294, the light brown is 292.
Correct, and those are the renderings, the new proposed buildings. We're gonna have.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought those were existing. All right.
We will show you some existing pictures, Mr. Chair, as well.
Okay.
The, the new proposal is we're preserving the two existing structures, and we're changing the occupancy proposing to, at 292, to a three-family building, and changing the occupancy at 294 to a three-family building. We're proposing additions going up on the building and also complete renovations of both structures. As we go down through these photos, this is just, you can see the composition of the area, because it is a 3F 2000 district, the majority of every building around us is three-family, except to the one on the right. The lot sizes that we have is 5,000 square feet, so each lot mirrors each other. This picture right in front of you shows the two existing structures as they are now. So you can see, we're gonna keep the contours of the building going up and going back in the, in the rear of the properties, but they will remain three, they will be three families, not four-family structures. Our lot size is 5,000 square feet. Just to go over the floor plans at 292, so these are very typical of each other. Our lower level will have, it's a bi-level unit, so we will have a separate common area for utilities that will be accessed through the side of that building at 292. And we will also have a lower-level family room and a half-bath down there. As we go up to the first floor, we'll have three bedrooms and two baths, so the total square footage of that unit is 1,470 square feet. We heard from Eagle Hill Civic that they wanted to see more family units, so these are all three bedrooms. Unit two, as we go up to the second floor, is 1,014 square foot, two-bed, two-bath with a rear deck. And unit three is 1,060 square foot, three-bed with a two-bath. That's all of the floor plans of 292. If we go to 294, we have our lower level that has, it's a bi-level unit as well, with separate access through a front access door of the property. It has a common mechanical room with fire protection system and our meters, and then we would have a separate access for our lower level that would have a family room, a storage area, and a half-bath. And that would go along with bi-level of upstairs to the first floor that has three bed and two baths, very similar to 292. That unit is 1,426 square feet. As we go up to the second and third floor, each unit is 1,003 and 1,065, three beds, two baths. So just another point to note, because I spoke to the zoning board yesterday, we, fourteen letters of support were submitted, although they didn't make it to the file, they are there in the mayor's office and the councillor's office does have them. Our ceiling height in both the basements is seven foot eight, and as I mentioned, those both have those separate access. We have a large green space area, and working with our Butters as well as Eagle Hill in preserving the building, we also wanted to preserve our rear yard and green space, just to go over the violations that were mentioned. So our additional lot area required would have been 1,000 for the additional unit, and we're proposing 500 additional square feet, because it is a 2F, a 3F 2000 district. Our floor area ratio is 1.69 for 292 and 1.65 for 294, 1.0 is what's allowed. Our height, we meet the stories, so it is three feet. We are now, we are proposing 41 feet, two inches, and 41 feet, six inches, 35 is what's allowed. But we did take off and working with the community an entire floor. This project was much different. It was gonna be a unit proposal and tearing down the building, so these, again, we made that change. Our front yard is no change, the building stand, but it's two foot one and two foot nine and five feet is what's required, but the building is remaining, so that's a pre-existing violation. Sideyard, again, no change, it's two foot six. We have one foot nine and two foot one on the 292 building, and one foot four and three foot three on the 294 building. And then our rear yard, just to point out, 30 is required. We have 24.8 for both buildings, but that includes a five-foot deck that goes out on the, on the fifth floor, on the second floor. And so that, really, the, from the building to yard, we would be at inches away from 30 feet, minus the deck. We have 1'9" and 2'1" on the 292 building, and 1'4" and 3'3" on the 294 building. And then our rear yard, just to point out, 30 is required. We have 24/8 for both buildings, but that includes a 5-foot deck that goes out on the, on the fifth floor, on the second floor. And so that really, from the building to yard, we would be at inches away from 30 feet, minus the deck. And then obviously, in our original proposal, we had parking, but in maintaining the buildings, we are not able to create any parking for the project. I can answer any questions.
Okay, yes, I'm very familiar with Princeton Street. Parking is a disaster there. But I'm a little unclear about the grade in the basements. It looks like it's a walkout to the front, and then what happens as you move to the back?
So it slopes, so there's a, there's a, there's a grade change as you go back. But in the front of the building at 294, there is a walk-in directly, that's for the common utility room only. On 292, there's a side entrance to that utility room. So the only entrance, those are only family rooms. Those aren't basement apartments down there for the bi-level unit.
And so is there, is there, are there windows there or not?
Yes, there are windows, yes, on the sides, correct. I know Eric Zacherson's on the call as well, he's the architect.
They must be well-winded, because it looks like the grade increases dramatically.
292 has that door in front.
Yeah.
And--
I'm talking, I'm talking about as you go back.
Is the architect on the call? I know he, Eric Zacherson should be on here. There's no window wells in the rear, we know that. Madam Basser, do you see--
Yes, I have Eric--
Okay, the architect is here.
Okay, Mr. Drago, I'm looking at this drawing that's on the screen. The basement plan on the left, and there's a family room, but it looks like there's also a bedroom, no?
No.
Okay.
Those are existing plans, right? So we're getting rid of two existing bedrooms that are down there now.
Oh, you're getting rid of them, oh, okay.
Right, so one of these buildings will be a condo building. The other one is a proposed rental building.
Okay, so--
It is bedroom--
No, no, okay, so the only, the only use on the basement is of the family room, correct?
Correct, in each building, there's only a family room and a half-bath, and then a common utility room separate.
Okay, 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 okay. All right, Mr. Kindal, how are the drawings?
Drawings are adequate.
Okay, any questions in the board? Is anyone here to testify in favor of the projects?
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif at the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We are in support of this proposal. We understand that there were existing concerns of parking related to this proposal, but during the community process, the applicant did address most of the concern of the butters and modified the design of the proposal, as you guys have heard. They have received feedback and general support from the butters and neighborhood, and neighbors in the area. Thank you.
So what, so what is the mayor's office current position, given the changes?
Our, our position is support for the proposal, based on the design consideration and changes related to the number of stories, height, and other design elements that Mr. Drago spoke to.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. I'd like to echo the mayor, the comments from the mayor's office and go on the record in support of the proposal, given the changes that the proponent has made to the, to the proposal.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Mike Fortune, the secretary here. We have four letters of support on both projects and one letter of opposition on both projects. The opposition is in regards to parking.
Well, parking is a problem on Princeton Street, no doubt. Does the BPDA want to weigh in?
Yeah, in a way. BPDA didn't receive updated plans in time for our board to make a recommendation, so our recommendation would be deferral until we receive sufficient plans to make a recommendation.
Okay, we often have, are in that situation where we get plans late and you haven't seen them, so we tend to move ahead. Anyway, okay, anybody, are there any raised hands? We gotta invest.
Yes, there is, Mr. Chair. Carla, you're unmuted.
Hello?
Hi, you're unmuted.
How you doing? My name's Pierre New at 147 Lexington, and I am in support of the plans at 292 and 294 Princeton.
Thank you.
Andrea, you're unmuted.
Hi, how are you, board? Respectfully, Mr. Drago, I am a direct abutter and have several people that have sent a letter to--
What is, what is your address, ma'am?
I'm 2096 Princeton Street.
Okay.
I know all of us abutters are in, not in favor of this project. They are, the proposed project, as you see it on the rendering, is not the actual project that they are proposing. It's not in height and it's not in length. My house is currently set back. This project will be now approaching into my light, my, my view sightlines of green space and also will increase the parking capabilities. As you say, as you know, Princeton Street is stairable. This Civic Association of Eagle Hill voted down this project. They did not support this project. Also, the mayor in Anorin Heights visited. He said that any single-family that the butters wanted to save, he would support that. I'm not quite sure how the city is doing this in support or the city of the mayor, if both direct the butters and most all our butters are fully against this project.
Okay.
The basement floods, the current basement's flood, and they are not adequate for another housing unit.
Okay, thank you very much.
May I respond, Mr. Chair?
Let's hear all the testimony, then you can respond.
Thank you.
Carla, you're unmuted.
Hi, good morning, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Good morning, board. My name's Leonard Olson. I live at 97 Lexington Street, Apartment 2. I'm here to stand in opposition, supporting Ms. Villanova in the testimony she just gave for much of the same reasons and also echoing what she mentioned about the Eagle Hill Civic Association, which I also attend and heard quite a lot of opposition to this project on several of these calls, including with the updated plans. So just standing in support of her opposition, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have no other raised hands.
Okay, Mr. Drago, I'm a little confused about the suggestion that there's a discrepancy between what we're being shown and what's planned to be, being built.
So, Mr. Chair, the confusion might be when we started this project, we had a totally different project that would raise the existing buildings. It was a proposal of nine units, and it was a much different building with parking interior. We worked specifically with our butters, as well as the Eagle Hill Civic Association, to keep those two buildings. That was the point, and take a floor off this building, which we did both. We, I also want to point out, our building goes back no further than the direct abutter that you heard from. So, and we maintain almost 30 feet of a rear yard, was exactly what she wanted. We also, because of the slope and change, we're really only 31 feet in the back where her house is set in the rear. So our only height is away from her house. So we really tried to do every single thing--
She, actually, she mentioned that it was set in the front, that it was set further forward.
So her house is set much more back. If you look at the renderings or any of the pictures, we are close. And as the building goes back, the gray change brings the slope down. So the height would be less in the back, as well as a 30-foot, almost a few inches away from a 30-foot setback.
Is there, is there a violation, front yard setback?
There is a violation, but only existing because we're not changing the building. That's a pre-existing because we're not--
Okay, thank you. All right, can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Following the next case, calling BOA 107--
Can I, before we go forward, Mr. Drago, I would really suggest, I would really suggest, sit there, be communication with the butters, because it's not a great situation where we are with having to make a choice around something where there may be two, the concept of two different sets of plans floating in people's heads. So I would ask you, we voted to approve, but I would definitely ask that you reach out to the butters and explain what actually is being proposed, as opposed to what they may think is being proposed.
We will, Mr. Chairman, and we will also follow up during construction with them as well before starting.
All right, well, I would suggest doing it sooner, even before construction.
Correct, I'm just saying, even then, as well as we move forward, we'll have a construction plan for them.
Okay, all right, Mr. Fortune, sorry.
That's okay, Mr. Chair. Calling the next case, calling BOA 1071909, 28 Monument Street. This is for the conversion of half an existing basement into a habitable area, which would be part of an existing unit 1. The first floor within a three-family residence. The living spaces will be built along a code-compliant egress windows. The violation is Article 62, Section 8, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Timothy Sheehan. I'm the architect for the project. I'm at 9 Wall Street in Charleston as well. Yes, what we propose is, this is an existing three-family building with an uninhabited basement at the moment that only has ceiling height right around 7 feet. What we propose to do is convert that into habitable basement area. It will be, when finished, the proposal is to have an additional bedroom and more living space, another bathroom down there. And it'll amount to another 620 net square feet, which will knock us further over the FAR that's allowed. Currently, that site is 2,040 square feet. The building has 4296 square feet existing. The three families, the three units are there now. So when we add that 620, we get to, you know, we get about 826 square feet over. So that's the FAR violation, that's our only violation. So the issues are, the primary issues are the ceiling height. Right now, it varies from 610 to 7, so we're gonna excavate down to get a finished 7'6" ceiling height. And we're gonna open up, luckily, on the right side of the building, we have enough room to put windows in. And the grade's up about 50, it varies because it slopes from front to back, from back to front, but we'll, the 44 inches in the back bedroom, we might need a slight step up. But we should get the right amount of light and air and egress windows from the new proposed, you know, expanded living space.
Okay, sounds like you're running a little, little tight there in terms of code.
We're tight, yeah, the back windows will be tight. They should just, we should have the 7 feet at the step for the egress. And, you know, you know, like that, that grade at the side is right there. And at that back bedroom, that back new bedroom, at the window all the way to the left, we might miss it by an inch or two, but we could drop the grade a few inches if we had to. We'll make it, though, either way.
Okay, Mr. Kindal, how are the drawings?
Drawings are adequate.
Okay, any questions on the board? Is anyone here to speak on behalf of the proponent?
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif at the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this proposal. We think it's a modest proposal. We have not heard any negative feedback from neighbors on this and have received no opposition to it to date.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would also like to go on the record in support.
Brian Glasscock, BPDA. We don't have a recommendation on this one.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, secretary here, we have one letter of support, no letters of opposition.
Are there any other raised hands?
Mr. Chair, I have one raised hand, but I'm unsure if this is in response to this project. Carla, you're unmuted. Yes, Mr. Chair, I think he just never took his hand down from the last project, sorry about that.
Okay, no problem. Okay, can I have a motion? I think, given the, the tightness of the dimensions, I think we want whatever motion to include no building code relief. So I'll give a motion.
I make a motion to approve BPDA design review and a proviso that no building code be really given.
Okay, I'm not sure if we need design review because there's no exterior work, but we definitely--
I'm sorry. Just a proviso with building code relief.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.
Following the next case, calling BOA 1080541210, Endicott Street. This is to extend the elevator stop to roof, to ADA access to the roof deck. Violation Article 54, Section 10, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive in Article 54, Section 18. Roof structure restrictions, access shall be by hatch or bulkhead. Name and address for the record, please.
Stephen, you're unmuted. Hi, this is Marie Rice. We're on the next item, not on this item.
We're 203 West Springfield.
Do we have someone here from 210 Endicott Street?
Mr. Chair, I see no raised hands, and I do not--
Mr. Chair, we can, we can come back to that.
Okay, let's, let's keep, let's keep moving, then.
Mr. Chair, I actually see William Ferrullo. William Ferrullo has his hand raised and is the lawyer for the project.
For 210 Endicott?
Yeah.
Okay, then let's go forward, do that. Is someone there?
I don't see William on here. Did I miss it? Ryan, are you speaking to this? Ryan.
Yes, hi, I'm actually on the phone with attorney Ferrullo. He is on the call here, but he's unable to be unmuted. I don't know if you have the ability to do that on your end.
Yeah, he's not on the call anymore, he must have--
I can see him on my end.
I see a video of Mr. Ferrullo, and the mute, and he's muted.
Oh, there he is.
I apologize for that.
Thank you.
Liam, can you hear?
I can, I can hear you, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ferrullo, you wanna, you wanna tell us about this project?
Yes, I will. This is an application to amend a building permit that was issued as a result of relief from the board to build a four-residential-unit building with ground-floor garage and a roof deck. And the purpose is to amend the plan for an extension of the headhouse for the elevator override, to explain. One of the owners, Mrs. Delarussell, had a stroke in the spring, which has made her now wheelchair-bound. They intend to move it to the first-floor unit of this, which is a handicapped access unit, and are asking that they can bring the elevator to the roof now. The elevator originally stopped on the fourth floor, but in order to bring it to the roof, the elevator headhouse has to be raised by 7'8". As a result of raising it, it also has an elevator lobby, and that leads to our two violations. One is for some additional floor area, which is the elevator lobby area to allow for, again, the handicapped access to the roof. And the second is the Article 5418 violation is that there's a requirement to use a hatch as opposed to a headhouse on buildings in this district in the north end. But the headhouse has already been approved in the earlier submission for this plan. So those are two violations, and as stated, the purpose is to allow handicapped access to the roof deck.
Okay, we're looking, Collette, could you just scroll down a little bit? Just leave that in elevation, but scroll down so we can see the-- no, the other way, I'm sorry, scroll up. I just want to see the headhouse. A little more, okay. Why is it so high? Is that necessary from the, from the elevator headhouse?
Yes, the smaller headhouse to the right was the, is the stair headhouse. To the left is the, is the elevator headhouse, which used to match that in height when it was the override only. Since the elevator now comes to the roof and has an 8-foot height to that, the override-- that, the override goes above that for another 7'8". So that goes from eight foot to, uh, 15'8".
Wow, I, I mean, that's, whoa, that's an unusually high headhouse, and it really changes the, uh, the, the roof line. How far back is, oh, yeah, good, now outside elevation, it, it's set toward the rear of the building, right?
That's correct.
Okay, well, that, that, that makes it slightly less offensive. Um, okay, how are the drawings, Mr. Kindal?
Drawings are fine, um, I was looking for an explanation on the parking situation, it looks tight.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Mr. Kindal?
The, the parking situation looks tight, I was looking for an explanation there.
Okay, but that's an existing condition, right?
That's correct.
Okay. I think, I think all we're dealing with is the, uh, the headhouse. Um, okay, um, any questions to the board? Is there, um, uh, is anyone here to speak in support of the project?
Mark, is there a hand? I'm sorry, before, I just had a quick question, is, is that already done? I'm looking at Google Earth, is the headhouse or the structure already completed?
It, it is.
It is completed?
It is, uh, the contractor, who is the son of the owner, is, is also on the phone, uh, reason for that being is he thought he had had that approved when he submitted the plan, uh, it was after the plan had been submitted that they flagged the, the FAR issue.
So, he built it without a permit?
Uh, he could answer that better than I can.
Well, uh, you can probably answer it.
Well, as I'm saying, I, I believe he, he thought that it was accepted, uh, that the amended plan was accepted, it was only much later that he received notice that, uh, it included an FAR violation for the lobby.
Uh, Mr. Ferrulo, I'm not concerned about what he thought, uh, he either had a permanent hand or he didn't when he built the, uh, the additional headhouse.
Well, he, he, what it is, is the building is on the construction, so he, he's had the permit, as, as mentioned, he filed it as, uh, an amended plan to the permit.
Right, well, I, I understand that, and did he, and did he have approval for that amended plan when he built the headhouse?
Uh, not, not in terms, uh, to my knowledge, not at.
But, 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 Mr. Ferrulo, this should be a yes or no answer.
And, and, and again, I'm stating is, the permit he had was the permit to build, which he thought the amended plan was approved, but I, I, I am presuming he never had anything in writing.
Okay, so that's a no, that's a long way of saying no, all right.
Well, again, as I said.
No, 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 that's fine, uh, is there anyone here, is, is there, I, this is, this is something that, that annoys this board considerably, when people are coming after the fact to approve something that shouldn't have been built until, with, uh, until it was approved by this board. Um, uh, is there anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Mr. Chair and members of the board, this is John Armono from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, um, the applicant had gone through a community process where it received from the North End Waterfront Residence Association, a letter of non-opposition, as well as the North End Waterfront Neighborhood Council, a letter of support, um, at this time, our office would like to go on record in support of the project.
Um, is the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services aware that it was already built without, without a permit?
At, at the time of the presentation, we had only seen the drawings, um, that had been presented here.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards, the council would also like to go on the record in support.
Um, Mr. Chair, Brian Glasscock for Boston Planning Development, uh, we were going to recommend approval with, uh, design review, but that seems a little moot now.
Um, well, I, well, actually, I would say, no, that's not necessarily true, it can all, it can, it can always be modified after the fact, but anyway, let's, uh, let's keep going, any, any, anybody else like to testify?
Mr. Chair, I have a raised hand, but I don't think he's testifying, but do you mind if I check?
Sure, go ahead.
Ryan, are you here to testify?
I am not, no, I'm also one of the attorneys for the applicant.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have no letters of support, no letters of opposition.
Okay, all right, well, we, we, we have support from the Mayor's Office, we have support from the city councilor, um, you know, it, it makes sense, I ju- I just, uh, I have to say, it's really troubling when people come before us and ask for, uh, ex post facto, uh, approval. Um, so I, so, I'm looking for a motion, if there's a motion to approve, I think it's perfectly okay to have, uh, BPDA design review, and for the BPDA to say, because this is, this is a very tall, unusually tall headhouse, and it is toward the rear of the building, which is better, but I think if the BPDA can figure out a way to reduce the size and still have it be handicapped accessible, um, then the contractor should be prepared to modify what he's already built without, without permit approval. So I'm looking for a motion.
I, I'll, I'll make that motion, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, if there's a way to dress this up, the BPDA can figure that out, and the contractor should do it. Uh, so I make a motion to approve a BPDA designer review.
I'll take the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ujero, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the, the motion carries. Mr. Ferrulo, um, please tell the contractor not to do that again, and not to come before the board, you got away with it this time.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman, but it, as I said, I, I really do think it was an honest mistake on his part.
Honest or not honest, doesn't matter, it's a mistake.
Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 106 4449 203 West Springfield Street. This is remove and modify the height of existing roof in one-story rear addition, install a new rubber roof, install a new entrance door, in existing window location, install a new landing deck and a roof deck tiles, the violation Article 64, Section 34. Name and address for the record, please.
This is Stephen Rice at 203 West Springfield Street, Unit 1, Boston 02118. We are the, uh, I am the owner and resident of the unit, this is a, uh, a five-story row house on the, uh, on West Springfield Street, in the rear of our, our unit at Butson Alley, uh, to the, next to, uh, the Worcester Street Garden. Uh, this is a 19-building row block, and we're in the middle of the block. Uh, what we are proposing to do is to create a living space on the roof of an existing one-story garden-level extension in the year, in the rear yard of, of the, uh, unit. We want to, uh, reframe the existing roof, um, by, uh, taking one side of the roof down by 18 inches to create a level roof, and to, uh, reframe that, install a new rubber roof on that, uh, and on top of the rubber roof, we would install, uh, porcelain deck tiles, uh, with a, uh, and then, uh, we would connect that unit to a, uh, a small balcony, approximately four by nine inches, connecting to the door, and.
Feet.
Four by nine feet. The, uh, existing one-story structure is, is approximately 11 by 20 feet. The, uh, our, our understanding of the denial of, of the, uh, building permit is based on the general prohibition and, uh, of altering the profile or configuration of the roof, with a condition, conditional use grant would be based on the potential to damage the uniformity of height or architectural, uh, character of the immediate vicinity. Um, rules do provide allowance for the construction of a, a roof deck when erected on a main roof, however, this is not a main roof, this is, uh, this is just the, the roof of the one garden, one, one-story garden extension. Um, there are other provisions in the, uh, 64-9 that, that do contemplate the construction of a roof deck on a, a first-story house, because it, uh, they are excluded from the dimensional requirements in, in 64-9, so we're seeking to, um, to, uh, have that proposal.
Okay, so there, there's no modification to the, uh, to the one-story rear addition, it's simply the roof and the deck above it?
Correct.
Okay, have you gone before landmarks?
No, we, uh, we, we were told we had to go through, through, uh, your board before landmarks.
Okay, uh, so you haven't submitted anything to landmarks?
Correct.
Okay, um, how are the drawings, Mr. Kindal?
Drawings are fine.
Okay, um, uh, any questions to the board? Is anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board, my name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, I held in a butters meeting for this project, we received no, uh, opposition to it, their asking for is, uh, pretty modest, and they're not proposing a headhouse, uh, in terms of access to the roof deck, so we do remain in support of their proposal, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have no raised.
Mr. Chair, secretary here, we have no letters of support, nor letters of opposition.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, BPDA recommends approval with, uh, design review and landmarks, uh, Southern Landmarks District Commission.
Yeah, well, they don't have to go to landmarks anyway, um, okay, uh, all right, well, this seems like a relatively, uh, de minimis, uh, project, the, the, the one-story rear addition is not being modified, so it's really only the roof and deck on top of that. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA designer review.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? All right, my motion carries.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 106 4451 209 West Springfield Street. This is to build a new rooftop deck and approve architectural plan, install a steel spiral stairs from the lower rear deck to the rooftop access, the violation Article 64, Section 34, roof structure restriction. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is Captain Cox, uh, I'm the owner of the unit at, at 209 West Springfield Department 4. Um, so regarding a, a roof deck.
Tell us what you're proposing.
Yep, um, proposing building a, a roof deck, this is a, a four-unit building, um, my unit is the, the top two floors of this unit, as well as, has roof rights for the building, uh, proposing, there's currently a, a deck, uh, off the, the fourth floor, um, that has, uh, overlooks the garden behind, proposing building a, a roof deck on the roof, um, with, uh, a spiral staircase from that back, back deck up to the roof. Um, it's set back from the street, if you look on the, the right side of this page, um, that's West Springfield, and then there's an alley on the, uh, the left side of this page.
So, this spiral staircase will be enclosed or open?
Uh, open.
Pardon me?
Uh, open.
Open, okay, um, and, and I assume it'll be steel?
Uh, correct.
Okay, okay, uh, how are the plans, Mr. Kindal?
Drawings are adequate.
Okay, uh, is there anyone here to speak, uh, on behalf of the proponent?
Good afternoon, uh, good morning, still morning, good morning, Chairman, members of the board, my name is Faisal Sharif with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, uh, once again, this is a proposal on that same street you just heard of, it's relatively minor, uh, we have no opposition related to, uh, the access to, uh, the roof deck, and roof decks are pretty common in the South End, we remain in support, thank you.
Mr. Chair, uh, BPDA recommends approval with, uh, design review, um, you know our feelings about, um, preferring a hatch rather than, uh, spiral stairs, um, but, uh, approval with, uh, design review is our recommendation.
Well, we, I mean, we prefer, we prefer hatch versus headhouse, not so, at least this board's position is relatively neutral on spiral stairs versus hatch. I mean, for the re, because it doesn't really affect the roof line in the same way.
Right, right.
Okay, Mr. Fort, Mr. Fortune, do you have, uh?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we have no letters of support, no letters of opposition.
Okay, and any raised hands, Madam Ambassador?
Mr. Chair, no raised hands.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Uh, probably with, uh, design review.
Okay, I can't, can't get it right today, uh, what does?
All right, anything, anything on the exterior? Okay, uh, is there a second?
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 106 6035 67 Appleton Street. This is a change of occupancy from store to store with two apartments, and renovate to new apartments, the violation Article 64, Section 9, view of open spaces insufficient, Article 9, Section 1, extension of a non-conforming use. Name and address for the record, please.
Caller, you can go ahead.
Is the applicant on the line?
Mr. Chair, I have a raised hand, um, he's unmuted. I have two.
Hear me?
Caller, you're unmuted.
Anthony Rossi, I am.
Caller?
Hello? Hello?
Yes.
Hello? Mr. Chair, can anyone hear me?
Yes, who is this?
Yes, hi, Mr. Chair, I apologize, um, this is Anthony Rossi, I'm part of the ownership group that owns the building at 67 Appleton Street, um, members of the board, my address is on 75 Williams Street, um, in relation to this petition, this is, this, we purchased this building a little bit over a year ago, we renovated the exterior of the building and, uh, one residential unit, this was a three-unit building, consisted of two commercial spaces and one residential unit, one of the commercial spaces has been a, um, a dry cleaner that's been there over 30 years, and the space in question that's before this board is a convenience store that, um, that has vacated the premises, uh, uh, during COVID, a little bit prior to COVID, and as a result, we looked into changing the use of that retail space to be consistent to what's in the neighborhood, and it's on the corner of Appleton and Clarendon, to be one, an additional residential unit, so the building now, the proposed use is to be two residential units and one retail, rather than two commercial, um, and, uh, one residential. So everything that we are doing is inside the, that actual space itself, nothing as far as extending the footprint of the building, or anything to that, to that effect, that's essentially what we're doing, we did meet with the neighborhood, uh, we had a neighborhood meeting, and they were in support of saying.
Okay, so the commercial space will be on the first floor, and the, um, residential on the second and third?
No, so I, I apologize, so this is a corner building on Appleton and Clarendon, so there's one commer, there's two commercial spaces existing in the building, one has its own entrance, and that's on the, uh, uh, Appleton side also, I apologize, Clarendon side, the Appleton side, there, there used to be a convenience store that was on that corner of Appleton and Clarendon, that, that's gonna be gone, that will be a residential on the first floor and the basement, lower level, it's a duplex apartment, a two-bedroom apartment.
Okay, can you, uh, Collette, can you scroll back up to the floor plans? Okay, um, because the propos, okay, so, looking at the proposed first floor on the left there, proposed first floor and basement, um, what will be the, uh, use of the, the basement residential unit?
There'll be, there'll be, it'll be a duplex, part of the first floor unit, so.
Yes, no, no, I understand, what, what will be the use of the?
It'll be, it would be part of the residential, it'll be a bas, it'll be a bedroom, that, and a bathroom.
Bedroom and bathroom.
Yeah, and it'll be egress window for saying.
Okay, how, um, uh, Collette, can you show the elevation, how, um, is, is that basement below grade? Can't really tell from that, is there, is there an elevation of the whole building?
Uh, this is all I got.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, uh, so right now, when you go into the space on the first floor, you go up a few steps, uh, to get there, there's actually, I don't know if you can tell from the exterior of the building, there's, there's brains coating on the left-hand side, we already measured out with our architect and our code consultant, that we're gonna put an egress window there, so it's about 40, I think 44 inches below grade.
Okay.
So a portion of it is above the first floor, and a portion of it is below the first floor.
Okay, and what's the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
Uh, it's about 7'6".
Okay, is that, is any of that shown anywhere in the plans, can you, uh, scroll down, uh, Collette? Mr. Kindal, how are the drawings?
In the basement, all I see is a height, I'm just calling out 6'9", I don't see 7'6". In the basement, all I see is a height. I'm just calling out six foot nine. I don't see seven foot six.
It, it, it's seven foot six. I think six foot nine is where the column line used to be. They're like the beams.
Mr. Kindal, can you help us with, uh, what drawing are you looking at?
That is A two.
All right, Collette, can you show A two? Okay, it does, there's no eleva- oh, where does this, it, it, where does this say ceiling height?
Plan all the way to the left where it says basement.
Okay.
Shows the ceiling height of six foot nine.
Okay, um, I can tell you right now, uh, to the applicant that there's no way we approve anything, um, that does not meet building code. So, uh, we, just, just be aware that if the board chooses to approve this, you will have to, uh, figure out a way to get seven foot six, uh, on the ceiling, whether it's excavation or whatever it takes.
No, I understand, Mr. Chairman, yes. And I believe the, the lowest part is on the left-hand side of the building where the mechanical room is. Now, where we're positioning the bedroom and the bathroom, that's the higher side. It was a different elevation. So we're familiar with the building code. We build a lot in Boston. So we're going to comply with all the building code to make sure it meets all the regulations of egress window and the code, and we're going to do a code analysis.
Okay, all right. Um, uh, is there anyone here to testify on behalf of the applicant?
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office did hold in a butters meeting on this matter, uh, where they receive generally support from neighbors. Uh, they also have the support of the Ellis Needy Credit Association, uh, of the South End. Just like to comment that this is very similar to, uh, existing buildings, uh, along Clarendon Street. Um, and also on Appleton, which is pretty much mixed use. So the change of use here from, uh, the two existing commercial spaces to one commercial space with residential above is very consistent to what we already see on the street. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Brian Glascock, Boston Planning and Development. Um, our recommendation is approval with proviso that there's no building code relief, uh, to be granted. We're also recommending, um, uh, removing that extension of living space in the basement. While it's not currently, uh, in a, uh, FEMA flood hazard area, it, uh, is below the, uh, projected sea level rise base flood elevation as part of our coastal flood resilience design guidelines. Um, and we know historically, um, basin flooding in the South End has been a, has been an issue and will be again.
Okay, but again, this is not in a flood, in a designated flood zone, right?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay, all right. Uh, is there any, uh, Mr. Secretary, do you have any, uh, letters of support or opposition?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we have no letters of support nor letters of opposition.
Mr. Chief. Any raised hands?
I would like to speak on this matter, sorry. Anna Calderon from Counselor Flynn's office. Good morning, Mr. Sherman, members of the board. The counselor would like to go on recording support. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Mr. Chair, I have two raised hands.
Okay.
Actually, one. Caller, you're unmuted. Okay, I have nothing.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Uh, motion to approve.
Uh, no building code relief, right?
With no building code relief.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Motion carries.
Calling a next case. Calling the next case, calling BOA 106 9771 4 Marlboro Street. This is a change of occupancy from three-family to a single-family. In addition, over the existing brick bay underground parking structure at the rear yard and modifications to the existing penthouse. Violation to article thirteen, section one, the building height is excessive in feet. Article thirteen, section one, the rear yard is insufficient, and article thirty-two, section four, this is in the G code. Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, hi, good morning. Uh, my name is Michael Ross, attorney for the law firm of Prince Lavelle on behalf of the, uh, petitioners, the owners of the building, Cindy and Seth Lowry. Um, this is an existing five-story Masonry, uh, townhouse in H three six five district. Um, that's presently, um, ju- just slightly nonconforming at the height. Um, it's a, it's a sixty-five and like four inches high building. Um, the rear of the building, um, is also, uh, nonconforming. Uh, I think if you go to A four, you'll get a good view of the, um, penthouse, um, uh, which I'm going to talk about. Um, so the plan is to reduce the size of the existing penthouse and reconfigure it, um, which will actually result in a net decrease in FAR. Uh, but because we're doing work at that height, we're not increasing the height, but we're doing work at that height, a few inches above the height, it does trigger that height violation. Um, the other work we're doing is in the basement. If you go to A one, you can get a, a good shot of that. Uh, and the plan there is to basically, um, uh, replace living space with garage space. We're, we're going to bring three cars, uh, internal to the space. Um, and that will actually result in an overall decrease, uh, in floor area in the building. Uh, because we have to allow the cars access now to the basement, um, we, we're needing to square the, um, the rear of the building. Uh, the building, as I mentioned, uh, is, uh, is a pre-existing, um, uh, a nonconforming, uh, rear yard setback. And so while we're not increasing or decreasing that setback, we are building, uh, within it, uh, to square off the, uh, the garage entry. And so that's the second, uh, form of relief, uh, that we're seeking, the rear yard setback relief. Um, we are continuing a bay from the first floor. Uh, you can go to A two, I think, to see that. Um, uh, off the rear, just extending it from the first floor up to the second and third floors. Again, not increasing the, um, distance of the setback, uh, but we are, uh, building within that squared-off area. In this case, just building off, building within the bay area, not even with the squared-off area. Uh, and that, that again, that was building within that rear yard setback area. And because the work we're doing rises to a level of, um, certain level of work, uh, we do also trigger G code. We've submitted to the board our Boston Water and Sewer Commission approval. We've been working with, uh, the community and the groundwater trust, um, and, um, have, uh, believe we've met their, uh, any concerns that they would have with regard to the groundwater. Uh, and I'm happy to answer any questions on this particular.
Okay, let's deal with the groundwater first. Is Christian Simonelli on the line?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good morning. Christian Simonelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. And we have both the BWRC and No Harm Approval Letters.
Okay, so let me, let's get that out of the way. Can I have a motion on the G code?
Motion to approve. Mr. Chair, we also have the letter.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now let's, now let's go. Is there, uh, Collette, can you show a draw, an elevation from the, uh, rear elevation?
Yeah, um. So I think the A one will probably give you the best shot. I, I, um, I failed to mention Guy Grass. He's on the call with us too, the architect. So if you have any specific questions, he can walk you through it. If you go to A one, oh, actually, that rear elevation is, 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 you're right, Mr. Chair, uh, uh, we, we'd show you what we're trying to do there. That garage.
So, so, so the bottom right, uh, there's, are those two side-by-side garage doors? Is that, uh, is that what it is?
That's correct. That's a new garage door.
Right.
That previously.
Comes off the alley in the rear?
Off the alley in the rear, correct.
Okay, okay. All right, how are the drawings, Mr. Uh, okay, that's, uh, that's helpful. Um, how, how the, uh, the drawings, Mr. Kindal?
Drawings are fine. I didn't see a ceiling height in the basement.
Well, it's now gonna, it, but now it's not going to be living space, right?
Okay. Drawings are fine.
Okay, um, any questions in the board? Uh, is there anyone here to testify on behalf of the applicant?
Uh, Chairman, members of the board, Chinese Mantha with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant completed a successful community process, which included in a butters meeting held on August tenth. Um, the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay has also submitted a letter of non-opposition. At this time, we have no further questions and concerns and would like to go on recording support. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. There, there is a small portion of living space in the basement, uh, outside the garage. Um, I, I do think our building heights are adequate. I could give, Guy Grass, he could provide the actual, uh, height of it. I just didn't want to misrepresent anything to the board.
Okay, uh, Mr. Fortune, are there any letters?
Uh, Mr. Chair, we have two letters of support, no letters of opposition.
Okay, any raised hands?
Mr. Chair, Brian Glascock for BPDA. Uh, BPDA did not make a recommendation on this.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, the only raised hand is the architect, so no other raised hands for public comment.
Okay, yeah, I, I'm, I'm not, uh, which is the existing condition, uh, from the, uh, uh, the basement ceiling height. So, okay, can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Chairman. This is in a historic district, so it will go to the, uh, Landmarks Commission of Design Review.
Yes, yeah, okay, uh, all, all those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, it's now eleven fifty. I'm going to call the eleven thirties. We only have two cases. Uh, but are there any deferrals for, or withdrawals for eleven thirty cases? Mr. Mr. Chair, we do have a withdrawal. I'm not going to make that note for the record. Going to call case BOA 105 5807, one sixteen Waldemar Avenue. Are they withdrawing? So I'm going to make a motion for denial without prejudice.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so, so moved.
I would take it that Harris House is moving forward.
Looks like we have four or five chances until the break, so let's, uh, let's keep moving.
Yes, let's do it. Case BOA 109 8736. I'm sorry?
Sorry, Mr. Clark. I had a hand raise. I wasn't sure if he was doing a deferral.
Mr. Chair?
On which case?
He just raised his hand, so I'm not sure.
We'll find out and I will tell him.
Okay.
All right. Do you want me to continue, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Case BOA 109 8736, fourteen to twenty West Broadway. This is an interior renovation of existing second-floor restaurant, a shelf space. Construct a new tenant separation wall and change proposed occupancy to include four units consisting of two studios and two one-bedroom units. This is a change of occupancy of forty-nine residential units, restaurant retail.
I'm going to a hearing, sorry.
Fifty-three residential units, restaurant retail.
I'll be a few minutes if you're on. I'm sorry.
Violation to article sixty-eight, section eight, insufficient additional audio per unit. Article sixty-eight, section thirty-three, off-street parking per dwelling unit. And article sixty-eight, section eight, insufficient open space per unit. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. My name is George Maransi. I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in Selbush, and I'm sorry for that ambient chatter. I had somebody come into my office as I was, uh, getting ready to start the hearing. I was going to ask if I could be heard since I'm using a new device, but obviously I think my microphone can be, uh, can be heard. Um, Mr. Chair, members, uh, I represent Fraser Fourteen Holdings Limited Partnership, uh, and its, uh, principal and manager, who's, uh, John Driscoll. Uh, Mr. Driscoll is the owner of, uh, fourteen West Broadway, unit two twenty, which is the subject of today's hearing. Uh, this is a building with forty-nine residential units and two commercial units. Uh, unit one twenty at the ground floor and unit two twenty at the second floor. Uh, this building was approved by this board in two thousand fifteen. My client purchased both commercial units, uh, back in June of two thousand nineteen. Uh, and, uh, as the clerk indicated when he read the case into the record, the building was originally approved and actually has a certificate of occupancy for a restaurant. Uh, my client quickly determined that, uh, a restaurant use at this particular location in West Broadway, which is all the way at the end of West Broadway, uh, was not a particularly, uh, practical use as there are a lot of restaurants on Lower Broadway, including directly next door to this building in the Cambria Hotel. Uh, the second floor space was intended to be either, uh, a second level, uh, of a restaurant, uh, and therefore connected with unit one twenty on the ground floor, or, uh, as a fitness center. Um, my client, uh, elected to take advantage of a provision in the master deed, which allows him to convert, uh, this unit, unit two twenty, into dwelling units. So the proposal is to take the, um, the, the current, uh, second-floor commercial unit of three thousand three hundred sixty-five square feet and convert it into four units. Uh, there would be, uh, one two-bedroom, two-bath unit of twelve hundred sixty-six square feet, a one-bedroom, one-bath unit of nine hundred forty-four square feet, and two studio units, one being five hundred fifteen square feet and one being five hundred fifty square feet. The violations owe to the, uh, lot size. Uh, obviously, four units are being added in an MFR LS district, which is where this is, five thousand square feet. Minimum lot size is required for the first unit and a thousand square feet is required for each additional unit. Clearly, the lot size cannot be increased, so the addition of four dwelling units triggers that violation. There's an insufficient usable open space violation. The requirement under article sixty-eight is two hundred square feet per dwelling unit, and there'd be no additional, um, usable open space created with these units. This is an interior, uh, uh, fit-out of an existing shelf space. Uh, and there's a violation for insufficient off-street parking. Uh, this building is located directly across from Broadway T Station. And I do point out that whether this was a commercial unit, a commercial use, or the proposed four dwelling units, uh, there would likewise be no parking for any commercial use here, which would in all likelihood be a much more intensive use. Uh, with that, I'll pause and take any questions that members may have.
All right, Mr. Maransi, so, uh, just, do you, do you have an elevation or rendering, um, that you can show us?
Elevation of the building? No. Uh, 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 again, it's just an, it's, it's an interior.
I'm trying, I'm trying to, I mean, I could go on Google Maps. I'm just trying to picture it, but, um.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, uh, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a large building. It's, uh, uh, I think it's a, well, I, I, it's a, it's a tall building. I think it's, uh, it's approximately ten stories or so. It's, it's, uh, right on the corner, the, the hotel, Cambria Hotel is on the corner of Dorchester Street. Yeah, this is right next to it.
I can, I can picture it in my mind's eye. Okay. Um, so the, the second-floor restaurant, uh, was never built out, right? It was just, uh, just shelf space.
Correct. It's, it's just shelf space. And again, my, my, the, the first floor, um, is my client will be leasing to a bank. So my client, again, decided that a restaurant was not the way to go here. Uh, the bank will actually also be coming before the board, requires a conditional use permit, interestingly enough, on West Broadway. But, uh, the subject of this hearing is only this unit two twenty. Uh, and again, so it was either going to be second-story commercial space. It could have been an office. It could have been a fitness center. But he's going with residential.
All right, and the size, and the size of the proposed two studios and one-bedroom units, please, again?
Sure. The, um, the, uh, uh, the studio units are, one is five hundred fifteen square feet, five one five, and the other one is five hundred fifty, five five zero. The one-bedroom, nine hundred forty-four, and the two-bedroom, twelve hundred sixty-six.
Okay, uh, how are the drawings, Mr. Kindal?
Drawings are adequate.
Okay, so, uh, really what we're talking about is, um, taking a space that was not built out and, uh, transforming it into, uh, from commercial to, uh, residential, from restaurant use to residential. Um, so it'd be, it'd be a total of forty-nine, was forty-nine units, now fifty-three.
That is correct. That's what mine is.
The application, um, says fifty-three units restaurant retail parking, but there won't be any restaurant, will there?
No, the, the ground floor, uh, uh, so not to mix cases, but, uh, I think in a number of weeks, the ground floor will be coming before this board for a conditional use permit for the bank. Uh, and then once the permits are pulled, then the restaurant use essentially gets removed from the certificate of occupancy. But until, until that use is changed, the restaurant is still alive, I guess, as it were.
Got it, okay. Um, uh, any questions in the board? Uh, it's, um, uh, is there anybody here to speak on behalf of the proponent?
Hi, Mr. Chair, Madam, um, members of the board. Henry Dillon, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Would like to go on recording support. Thank you.
Mr. Chair Secretary here. We have no letters of support but one letter of opposition, but it has to do, I believe, with the condo agreements.
Mr. Chair, Brian Glascock for Boston Planning and Development Agency. We have no recommendation on this case.
Mr. Chair, I have five raised hands.
All right, let them, let her up.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to speak, um, in opposition.
Can you say why, please?
Um, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Counselor Flynn's office. The counselor would like to go on recording opposition to this project. Please, no, we. Please note, we received feedback from the neighbors and former IAG members that the commercial space was an important neighborhood amenity, as well as concerns about parking and community process as neighbors wrote to us that they would like to see the proposal brought before the West Broadway Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Was it, Anna, was it never brought before the association?
I don't believe so.
Mr. Maransy, is that the case?
Mr. Chairman, I have, I can't show them in this forum, but I have three emails. I, I emailed the West Broadway Neighborhood Association on three separate occasions, asking if there are any concerns or if they wanted, there was no follow-up to me. I did receive one, actually, that said that, you know, acknowledged my email, but I was not invited or asked to present to the West Broadway Neighborhood Association.
Okay. Madam Ambassador, any more raised hands?
Yes, several.
I'm gonna call the ZVA, and they've been very friendly.
Ken?
Hi, this is Ken Howerton, 14 West Broadway. I oppose this request based on the fact that Mr. Maransy and his proponent did not respond back to the numerous questions from the abutters meeting. To, when this was originally scoped, it was supposed to be a commercial property with separate access to, from the street. This will impinge upon the one common space, which now we have four units to include two condo studio units that are the smallest, or almost half the size of the average-sized unit in the building. It will be exiting directly into our one common space. So it's our belief that this will be a de facto door unit that will be directly off our one common space. And these units will be built to a substandard level based on the build-out of the rest of the building. Mr. Maransy has not.
Yeah, so there was, there was no discussion with the neighbors?
We had a, a butters meeting, but Mr. Maransy did not engage us with a follow-up meeting. We had a bunch of questions to include, where are they gonna put the heat pumps? How are they gonna provide utility service? And we were just told a professional contractor, mechanical contractor would be engaged. But we have not seen detailed plans as far as whether or not they would need to tie into the building common systems and how they would run lines in order to support the utilities.
Okay, thank you.
Caller, you're unmuted. Oh, sorry, Mr. Chair.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Caller, you're unmuted.
Hi, Peter Pokuski here, am I up?
Yes.
Well, good afternoon to the board and everyone else. I'm speaking in opposition, I live eight inches away from the proposed change. I'm right above two of the proposed residential units. I was not notified of this hearing. I heard by word of mouth of the abutters meeting. I'm surprised the city is supporting this change because at the abutters meeting that the city hosted, they heard loud and clear from, I think there was 17 of us that opposed it. Also, thanks to Counselor Flynn's office for supporting us. The Neighborhood Association, West Broadway here, they had their first meeting last night. They were basically shut down because of the COVID situation. So I think, you know, they weren't really prepared to cope with this, not having received formal notice.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any, anybody else, Madam Ambassador?
Caller, you're unmuted.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan on behalf of City Council, Michael Flaherty. Although this case involves violations under Article 68, it would be a proposed change from a second-floor restaurant to residences. And if not converted, it would remain a vacant shelf space as the pandemic has created so many up and down Broadway. Due to those factors, the council would go on record in support.
Okay, all right, well, I am, Mr. Maransy, I'm struck by the fact that there seems to be quite a bit of a sense of lack of communication, whatever the merits may be of the case. And I, I think I'm gonna look, I'm gonna suggest that someone make a motion for a deferral.
May I speak, Mr. Chairman, please, may I respond?
Yeah, you already did once, go ahead, keep it short.
Well, I need to respond, because, I mean, that's one side of this. So, Mr. Chairman, we had the abutters meeting, and there are definitely concerns within the building with the unit owners. I, my client sent, my client and I have been dealing with the trustee. As I said, there are over 40 unit owners. They have been meeting online, I believe, with the unit owners meeting. My client last week sent his response to all of the concerns that were raised at the abutters meeting. And those concerns had to do with things like, as you just heard, about the fit-out and tying into utilities. And, I mean, there are very commonsensical answers to questions such, or issues such as that. I mean, this is an existing unit. Whether this unit is commercial or it's residential, it's already part of the building, and it already shares the building's amenities.
Mr. Maransy, I am not suggesting that there's any ill will here or bad motivations, but I am suggesting that this is probably a little bit premature and that you need, and that you need to kind of get your ducks in a row. If the answers are all commonsensical, then I presume logical, rational people will accept them. But if you just did it this last week, you know, and now we're having the hearing today, I'm not sure that that's quite enough time for, for this to be processed. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to defer.
I'll make a motion to defer. I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, okay, you have a date, Mr. Fortune?
We have a date of January 12th at 1 o'clock.
Okay, so Mr. Maransy, just sort of please come back with, with all, with these issues resolved as much as you can.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 1094579, 22 Boston Wharf Road. This is the installation of a new roof deck and egress from the 10th, from the 10th floor on an existing structural stub-ups. The violation is Article 13, Section 13-1, dimensional regulations, the minimum setback distance is of a parapet. Article 15, Section 15-1, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Rebecca Lee from Mintz, I am counsel to the proponent, which is Duck Creek Technologies, a technology firm that's located at the upper, the uppermost floor of this 10-story building. This 10-story building is a historic former Boston Wharf Company building that has a garage on the first six floors and upper-story office space on the top two floors, two of which are relatively recently added. This is a building where our client is seeking to add an approximately 3,800 square foot roof deck for its uses only. Its old meetings and client meetings not open to the public. The, the stairway headhouse results in an increase, a small increase in the gross floor area of the building, and there's a small storage room. Those two areas are small, they're imperceptible from pedestrian level. And so we're asking for zoning relief to allow this to move forward. We're very aware that this has to go to the Fort Point Channel Landmark District Commission, and we will do that after this meeting. We had been scheduled to go for an advisory meeting, but their last meeting went very late, and they basically ran out of gas to be able to do an advisory hearing. So we'll be before them if we are able to get the requested zoning relief. The plans that are before you were prepared by SGA and show, this is, it's showing an elevation of the building and it's also showing the roof top deck in plan view.
Okay, so is there an elevator in the building?
Yes.
Yes, so, so is there any elevator headhouse, right?
Yes.
Okay, and you're looking for a separate access, the elevator does not open to the roof?
Jessica Randolph is on, on the line from SGA. Can the secretary unmute her? She can speak to egress to and from the roof? The, yeah, Jessica?
Mr. Clark, do you want her unmuted, I mean, excuse me, Mr. Chair, do you want her unmuted?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I can explain a little bit of the existing conditions. The existing, the entire building does not go up to our, to the penthouse. We have an existing stair that does go up to the penthouse service area. The existing building made preparations for this roof deck when they added the two stories of office. They included preparations for a future handicap lift from the 10th-floor tenant space and the additional stair headhouse so that you could egress, you could have two means of egress from the roof deck, since it is going to have more than, you know, an occupant, allowable occupant load of more than 49 people. So.
So, so, so right now, the only access to, you know, if somebody needs to work on the mechanical on the rooftop units is that staircase, right?
Correct.
Okay, and what you wanna do, and the staircase, what, what's the, what's, how is the staircase open onto the roof right now?
The.
Is, is just a sloping, sloping roof above the stairs, like a small little sloped headhouse, or?
So the, the dark, the, the area of the roof that has the dark walls is the enclosed mechanical penthouse space. So the stair comes up inside the enclosed penthouse, and there's an existing door that goes, that you step out onto the roof from the boiler room there.
Okay.
But there's no door right now.
But there's also, there's also a set of stairs in the top right corner of the, of the roof, aren't there?
That's, that's the new one that we're proposing.
Oh, that's the new one, okay. And so, and, and what will that, that, and will there, how will it be finished out? Will it just be a sloping roof over the stairs that reflected the, the incline of the stairs, or how does that work?
So the plan we were doing was to match the existing materials of the penthouse, which is just a metal, sorry, insulated metal panel finish and have a flat roof. We actually did, we have a model there showing what it would look like, and we actually did a mock-up and placed for the Fort Point staff at one point, so you can.
Okay, you have something closer, I thought I saw an elevation rendering there of the roof deck itself. Does that show the, okay.
So, so it'll be similar to the acoustical wall rendering there? It'll be the, the stair enclosure would be the same.
Okay, got it, okay. How are the drawings, Mr. Kandell?
Drawings are fine.
Okay, is there anybody to speak on behalf of the proponent?
Hi, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support, thank you.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Counselor Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on recording support due to feedback from neighbors and the Fort Point Neighborhood Association who reported no issues, thank you.
Brian Glasgow, BPDA, we do not have a recommendation on this case.
Chair, we have one letter of support, no letters of opposition.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Sorry, sorry, good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board, Karen Foley, Counselor Sapi George's office, would like to go on record in support, thank you.
Sorry, Karen, didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, it's all right, it's all right.
Any other raised hands?
I have one raised hand.
Okay.
Caller, you're unmuted.
Sorry, wrong project.
Nothing further.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Motion approved with BPDA Design Review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
On the last two cases for 9:30, calling BOA 1072412, 843 East Fifth Street. There's a companion case, BOA 1072413, 843 East Fifth Street. This is to cut the back right side existing foundation in the first story for 10-foot driveway access for new parking of five vehicles. Renovate the entire three-family structure by constructing a rear addition in the rear, extend Unit 1 into the basement and a new private roof deck with a patch. The violation is Article 68, Section 29. This is the, 843 East Fifth, this is for five off-street parking accessed by a new driveway and new curb cuts. The violation is Article 68, Section 33, off-street parking loading requirement designed maneuvering. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and other distinguished board members. I am the proponent, Peter McFarland of 312 K Street, South Boston. I have submitted to you a full set of stamp buildable plans. I respectfully limit my time to two minutes. PDF pages 1 and 2 convey that the lot size is over 4,000 square feet on which sits an existing three-family decker. On PDF page 3 and 11, what's proposed is a Level 3 alteration and structural changes to accommodate both a 3-foot reduction in the first-floor west-side wall to allow vehicle egress, as well as a 25-foot 6-inch rear addition of just nine porches, thereby elongating the existing roof and triggering the one violation. On PDF page 18 are the proposed typical floor plans. And then a rendering of the new outside elevation is on page PDF. The proposed rear addition averages 336 finished additional square feet per unit, which allows for needed layout and modernization. For a neighborhood comparison, on the same block of East Fifth Street, there are similar homes in height and depth and rear parking. This thoughtful redesign is neighborhood-friendly, 40% square foot reduction in porches, a final FAR of just 1.17, and the new off-street parking makes it age-friendly and family-friendly. With neighborhood input, the proposed roof deck has been removed. I repeat, with neighborhood input, the proposed roof deck has been removed. The existing home's nine-bedroom count changed. The proposed extension into the, whose second means of egress is a full-size door, PD 27, to be on-grade with outside fresh air exchange. Finally, automobile maneuverability requires code release. However, I'd like to point out that unlike many other neighborhood vehicle access, this proposal is designed for exiting safely without backing into the street. Furthermore, the Public Works Department the proposed 10-foot curb cut plan, thank you.
Okay, so let's get, stress things out of the way. Despite what is advertised, you're suggesting there's no roof deck, right?
Correct.
Okay, can we go, and what are the sizes of the units, square foot?
Um, here, 1,200, 1,300.
Free. Okay, and is there a basement in this building?
It's unfinished basement, ceiling height 7 foot 1.
Okay, and it'll stay that way, right?
Unit 1 has an additional spaced, so, so Unit 1 will become a bi-level, and one bedroom will be located in the basement with a new finished ceiling height of eight feet.
And how's that gonna be accomplished, by excavating?
Yes, underpinning and excavating, yes.
Okay, is this, and what is the, what is this in relation to the grade? How far below grade is the, is the floor of the newly excavated basement?
Five feet and seven steps go up to a mid-landing where the door is, is the second means of egress, full-size door.
Seven steps from the floor?
Yes.
Uh, okay, so, and are there any windows, window wells in the bedroom?
There are, there are windows as well, yes.
What is the floor-to-sill height of those, of those windows?
When talking with ISD, the objective of the door was to meet the emergency second means of egress.
So that's the only means of egress?
It would, no, that, well, the, the, it's a bi-level, and so the first floor, front and back, would be the second means of egress.
Right, because there's an internal stair, right?
Right.
Okay. Little, I, I still, you still didn't answer the question. I'm trying to figure out, for the purpose of light and ventilation, what is the basement floor to the bottom of the window in the, in that bedroom? what is the basement floor to the bottom of the window in the, uh, in that bedroom?
Um, are, are you, do you, are you requiring it to be 42 inches?
44, but it, for, yeah, for bedrooms, the maximum is 44.
Well, um, it, it, but that, that was for emergency egress and emergency egress is as a new side-
I'm not talking about egress, I'm talking about light and ventilation.
Oh, okay, um, well, they're designed to be, they're designed to be, uh, three feet wide and a foot and a half tall. Um, so eight, seven, so, so five foot five off the floor.
Five foot five, that's 65 inches, okay. Um, I'd say, okay, well, we'll get to that in a moment. Uh, and the parking, can, uh, Collette, can you show that slide that showed the, uh, the driveway and the parking? There we go. Um, what, in the, in the bottom right, where the, the red X is, uh, there's not a, there's not, there's not a, uh, egress there. Is there, that just the, that just shows, starts backing, backing up?
That's correct, that, that's the lot line, is the boundary line there, so there's no, no egress there, correct.
Okay, so it is just straight out the front and it's a 10-foot wide driveway, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Um, how are the drawings, Mr. Candell?
Drawings are adequate.
Okay, um, uh, is there anybody here to speak, uh, in favor of, of the plan?
I have.
Mr. Chair, this is the secretary here, we have no letters of support, no letters of opposition.
Mr. Secretary, Brian Glasscock for BPDA, uh, we recommend a deferral. We did not receive plans in time from the agency to make, uh, a recommendation.
Okay, uh, anything, anything for the mayor, please?
Hi, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in opposition for this project. We held an abutters meeting on October 17th, 2019, and then another one on July 22nd. And again, not many changes were made, not really willing to work with the community. I have nothing but opposition letters that I sent to Stephanie in my records, so I can send those again. I don't know where they are, but, um, we have nothing but opposition, thank you.
And, and Haley, uh, what was the opposition based on?
Um, lots of things, I know he took off the roof deck, so that was one of the things, but mainly the parking in the back, um, lots of people were afraid of what happens if, um, a car goes through the fence or headlights in people's, because I don't know if you can see it, um, but if you go on like Google Maps, their driveway would be heading into like people's living rooms. So, all those cars would be parked basically in somebody's living room. Um, a lot of people have concerns about like the water table down there and what that will do. Again, that's like a zoning issue, but that is a concern, um, and the overall density of it.
Okay, thank you.
So, in, in my defense, as a proponent, uh-
Well, well, we're still taking testimony, and, and does anybody else want to testify in the case?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ana Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in opposition. Due to overwhelming feedback from neighbors and abutters at the meeting into our office, they relayed concerns regarding the process as many did not receive a flyer notification. They highlighted concerns about the 20-foot extension in the rear, the curb cut noise, exhaust, and headlights from cars parking out back, along with the loss of sunset views and other quality of light issues like trash removal. The City Forest Association is also opposed to the project as they would like to see the proponent to work with neighbors on these outstanding issues, thank you.
All right, thank you, well, okay, any, uh, any other testimony?
Yes, I have two raised hands.
Okay, uh, we want to try to go through quickly, um, uh-
Let's go on to Flaherty.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, on behalf of Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty, echoing the sentiments of the mayor's office as well as Council Flynn's office, the conference to go on record opposition.
Maria?
Monica, excuse me. That's okay, hi, this is Monica Santos, I am the Director of Abutters to 843 East Fifth. I live at 845 East Fifth. I would just like to echo the opposition that was heard from all the abutters during the community meetings. I will say we appreciate the fact that the property will be renovated. I do think it needs a facelift, however, the curb cut that will take away parking from owners on the street is very concerning. I think it should be stated that the developer plans for these to be rental units, not condos. So, this would be taking parking away from property owners on East Fifth to make parking for renters. Um, I would also stress again that the addition is, feels excessive and I would respectfully disagree with the developer that the parking in the back is very unusual for this sort of, um, strip of properties on East Fifth on this block. There is not a single property in this vicinity on this block that has parking in the backyard like this. We all have 50 to 60 feet of beautiful green space in the backyard. And obviously, if this property moves forward with putting, um, a driveway in the back, we'll all be looking at pavement and we'll all be dealing with the fumes and the lights and the exhausts and everything else that comes with having parking, um, you know, pointing directly at our abutting units.
Okay, I think, all right, thank you, thank you very much. I think, um, at this point, uh, it's clear, uh, I would entertain a motion for denial.
I'll make motion to deny, wow, straight denial.
Uh, you want to do it, uh, Mr. Chair, want to do denial without prejudice?
Just denial without prejudice, maybe they can come to an agreement or come, work something out.
Okay, I think you're right, that's better, okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, okay, the motion carries. Um, I think what we're going to do, Mr. Fortune, the only other item we have is the second 11:30 discussion piece, right?
Correct.
Okay, I think, uh, given, uh, how late it is, I'm, I'm going to suggest that we adjourn for the moment and we start back at 1 o'clock with that piece and then go into the 1 o'clock hearings. Okay, so, uh-
Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure, I think we're losing one of our board members by 2 o'clock. So, I, we have also the recommendations that we have to approve, so I don't know if you want to take this 11:30 case and finish it off and then take lunch?
Well, um, I, uh, we're running, we're running against a, uh, timeframe, but let's, let's wait and, and do that. We'll have a five-member board, we'll function that way, so I'm going to adjourn the meeting until 1 o'clock.
Back in the saddle?
I'm here.
Ed, you're present?
Okay. All right, the October 20th hearing is back in session. And Mr. Fortune, I guess we're gonna start with the the rediscussion from 11:30.
That's right. Madam, I say I did it.
He's gone hours without doing it.
I, I, you know what, you take a break and everything goes downhill. All right, I'm gonna get right to the 11, 11:30. There's only one case calling BOA 956971, 118 Harrishoff Street. This is a change of occupancy from a three-family dwelling to a four-family dwelling by adding a new apartment into the basement. Renovate the existing basement. Remove and replace the staircase from the first floor foyer to the basement. Construct a new dormer. The violation is Article 50, Section 28. Multi-family dwelling use is forbidden. Article 50, Section 29. The additional laundry area is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29. Usable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29. Side yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29. The rear yard is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 43. Off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Is the applicant there?
I see no raised hands.
Oh, well.
Uh, Mr. Chair, it's 1 o'clock, so I'm gonna make a motion to deny what I'll prejudice.
Um, yeah, I guess there's no other. Uh, Madam Ambassador, are you sure there's nobody there?
Yes, there are no raised hands, and I do not see Prince Callum.
And no one checked in at any point on this?
I'm sorry, this is Jessica. They were actually on the call earlier. And was notified about the break. I just wanted to make that clear, but they were on the call right before.
All right. Well, I can, I can take back my motion. I'll wait, and we can wait until whoever, whatever the chair wants to do.
Yeah, no, let's, let's give them an opportunity. This is, you know, all of this is still unfamiliar terrain for a lot of people.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna go to the hearings that we had, the subcommittee on Zoom of last week. Just to call them in for the rec because we need a motion approval. So I'm gonna go case by case. Case BOA 103558590 Princeton Street. The change of occupancy went to a two-family, it was approved. Case BOA 1096330, 37 Solley Street. This was to replace the existing deck. In addition, expand the first floor remodel was approved. Case BOA 1093721, 78 Washington Street. It was deferred to the subcommittee on 11/19/2020. 5 o'clock. BOA 1090161, 161 West Newton Street. Was to allow a tiny oil press and garden level. It was approved. It provides us to this petition only. It will expire within two years and no sales of the outside. Case BOA 1109230, 460 East Third Street. New second-story rear addition was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 105189114 Linden Street. This was to construct a dormer, a flat roof line. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 11126463557 Hill Avenue. Was renovated existing single-family. It was approved with BTA, BPDA. Case BOA 1030950, 6th Mallon Street. Was in addition to a garage at two floors above approximately 800 square feet. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 1087800424 Gallivan Boulevard. It was, it was extended living space to the basement. It was approved that the basement not to be used for bedrooms. The case BOA 1101025120 Ruskin Dale Road. Was insufficient, was a change of occupancy from a one-family to a two-family is approved with BPDA. Case BOA 1060522, 39 Harding Road. Was an additional half-floor with two new dormers. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 108774925051 Recreation Road. The third floor dormer, including existing roof, framing a new dormer. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 109611911920 Vogel Street. Was expanded kitchen, was approved with BPDA at a second floor. Case BOA 1074617, 34 progress road. It was a finished portion of the basement. It was approved. Case BOA 110995, 16 to 18 Bradbury Street. Was interior conversion of existing attic home office was approved. Case BOA 1071661, 85 Parsons Street. To remove the first-floor deck, send a second-floor bedroom. Extend family living room. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 1094388, 1 Everett Street. Was a change of occupancy from 20 apartments to 20 retail apartments. It was approved. The relief list, nail spar and ATM only. And then last case was BOA 1066431, 115 to 125 Jersey Street. This was a same-class, this was a laundry takeout restaurant. It was approved, I believe.
Okay, can I have a motion to?
Recommendations?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Mr. Fortune, I believe the 118 Harrishoff folks are here now.
Yeah, I'll read it to the record. Case BOA 956971118 Harrishoff Street. This was the, I'm sorry. Sorry. Change of occupancy from the three-family dwelling to a four-family dwelling by adding a new apartment in the basement. Renovate the existing basement. Remove and replace staircase on the first-floor foyer to the basement. Install and construct new dormer additions. The violation is Article 50, Section 28. Multi-family dwelling use is forbidden. Article 50, Section 29. The additional laundry area is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29. The usable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29. The side yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29. The ridgethat is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 43. Off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Prince Callum. My address is 78 Standard Street. Madam Ambassador. You said on the project. We had several meetings, and the last meeting we had, there was the question of the dormer. The neighborhood organization had a plot plan that was showing two dormers on both sides. But actually, that was a mistake, because we have the plot plan that has only one dormer on the left side of the building. And also, the owner does not want to do any dormer any longer. See, do away with that. He don't want to do it anymore. So that's our case here.
Okay, so, uh, this is, so the reason it's up for rediscussion is because these changes that you just described are since the last meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Mr. Kindal, how are the drawings?
Drawings are adequate.
Okay. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of the applicant?
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We had a Butters meeting in September 2019. They've also met with the Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association a few times, who again made the recommendations about removing the dormers. I do have several letters of support from Director Butters, and we like to go on record to support the project.
Okay, so Jessica, the, the changes that the applicant made were sufficient to overcome the, the previous concerns?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else? Uh, Mr. Fortune, do you have any others?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have 20, 28, three letters of, I'm sorry, 20 letters of support and two letters of opposition.
And the opposition is based on?
I believe that taken care of, uh, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Parking was one of them. And adequate plans.
Okay. Okay, any, any other raised hands?
Mr. Chair, there's no raised hands.
I'm sorry, I, I should, what did you say?
Actually, there is now a raised hand, one moment.
Okay.
Leland Cot, Cot?
Yes, hello. My name is Leland Cot. I'm the architect on this, on this project, and I'd like to be let in as a panelist, please.
Okay, we're, we're looking for public testimony now, uh, from members of the public, not from the, okay.
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 There are no other raised hands, Mr. Chair.
There are more?
Yeah.
There are none.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, then can I have a motion?
Uh, motion to approve with BPDA desire.
Thanks.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna call for deferrals or withdrawals for 1 o'clock. If you have any deferrals or withdrawals, could you please give me the address before you speak?
Sure, 24 Garden Side Street. It's BOA 1076707.
I'm gonna call it in for the record, calling BOA 1076707, 24 Garden Side Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. This is John Barry. I am the applicant on behalf of the owner at 24 Garden Side Street. We're respectfully requesting a deferral to have some more time to work with the community on this project.
Okay, what, what are the issues? What, why do you need a deferral?
Uh, there's a couple of community members that I think a meeting with them to try to work through what their concerns are would be beneficial before there's a hearing.
Okay, and how do you think that can happen? We can't, the earliest rescheduled hearings are in January, so I assume you'll have it done by then?
That's my, yes, please.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Second.
All those in favor? All opposed? Okay, Mr. Fortune will give you a.
That now went to January 26th of 2021, 1 o'clock.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals?
Mr. Clark, I have one more raised hand. Evan Warner?
Yeah, this is Evan Warner. I'm a resident at 23 Side Street across the.
Are you deferring?
Excuse me?
Are you deferring your project? This is for withdrawals or deferrals.
So I wanted to comment on the deferral that you just voted on.
No, we don't take comments on deferrals. They're generally pretty straightforward. If you'll have a chance to meet with the, with the applicant in the interim and then, and then be a president of the hearing in January. Okay, Mr. Fortune?
Yes, calling the first case for 1 o'clock. Case BOA 1054309, 1902A to 1904 Washington Street. This is to create a two-story addition in the rear of the property. The violation is Article 50, Section 29. Floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29. The rear yard setback is excessive. Article 50, Section 20. The side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Scott Kirkwood, and I'm here representing the owners of 190204 Washington. And that's actually, that's the address we're at right now. Joining me today is one of the owners and co-developers, Joseph DeGanji. On here somewhere.
I am here.
So this, this, what we have here today is kind of more of a formality than anything. We actually, the proposal for the two-story rear addition was actually approved by this board back in 2015. And a permit was in fact issued December of 2015. The permit was amended to eliminate the rear addition due to financing constraints that we had at the time. The two violations for side yard and rear yard setbacks are actually pre-existing non-conforming conditions. So the reason why we're in front of you here today is for the FAR, but like I said, this was already an approved project. We do have letters of support, and now it's just better timing for us to take this through.
So just to be clear, what you're asking for is something that was already approved, but they didn't get built because of financing concerns?
Yes, sir, and so we amended the permit.
Okay, but what you were proposing now is nothing different than what was presented a few years back?
It's not different. We might have made some, we made some design changes in terms of like what the facade materials were gonna be, but, you know, there were no concerns voiced during our Butters meetings. So, yeah, but as far as the, the spatial components of it, nothing's changing. Layouts, nothing's changing.
So the square, the square footage that you're proposing is the same?
Yes.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Kindal?
Drawings are fine.
Okay, um, is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the proponent?
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We had an Butters meeting for this project on August 13th. We do have two letters of support on file, and we'd like to go on record to support as well.
Mr. Chair, the secretary here, we have one letter of support, no letters of opposition.
Are there any raised hands, Madam Ambassador?
Mr. Chair, there are no raised hands.
Mr. Chair, Brian Glasgow for BPDA. We recommend deferral in order for submission of adequate plans.
Well, we appear to have the plans.
No, I'm just saying, I, we can't make our recommendation because we didn't get the plans.
Okay, okay, I mean, this, I, I think in those situations, it's not necessary for you to testify, but, um, so, okay. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPDA desire.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
On BOA 107077554, New Market Square. Three offices at grade at a mezzanine level containing three new offices, add steel stairs, new insulated glass. The violation is Article 9, Section 1, extension of a non-conforming use. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. LaCass, LaCass Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston. Attorney for the applicant, Phoenix Multi-Sport, Inc. Mr. Chair, members of the board. 2018, you approved the plans for this fitness use. 54 New Market Square location. The Phoenix is the fitness center for persons in recovery from substance use disorder. The current proposal before the board is to redesign the interior space to remove three offices at grade and to create a new mezzanine level, moving the three offices for gym staff members to the mezzanine level, which will create more floor space for fitness classes and general fitness uses associated with the Phoenix. Extension of a non-conforming use is a conditional use, so we are seeking a conditional use permit for the extension of the space on the interior of the building. No exterior changes, no other changes to the function or use of the Phoenix Gym at this time.
So the only violation is the extension of non-conforming use, is that correct?
That's correct. Article 9, Section 1, which requires. Article 9, Section 1, which requires a conditional use permit.
Okay, so this is an interesting time to be expanding a fitness center.
It actually is, and it's a very important fitness center. As I indicated, it's for persons in recovery, and they have a very active community, and they're seeking to expand their services to serve the community.
Okay, not that this, like, sorry, this is a zoning issue, but are the center taking precautions in terms of use with respect to COVID?
Absolutely. Most of their classes have been held outdoors, and this particular proposal will actually, you know, put the offices on this mezzanine level, create more floor space for actual use of the members, which will allow for more social distancing at this time.
Okay, all right, obviously, the last thing that folks in recovery need is to be dealing with the issue of exposure on top of that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, how are the plans, Mr. Kindel?
Drawings are fine.
All right, questions from the board? Is anyone here to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. Jessica Thomas again. Our office held in a Butters meeting on August 12th. We also received a support letter from the New Market Business Association in St. Sullivan. There were no, there was no outstanding concerns or opposition from the neighborhood, so we'd like to go on record to support.
Mr. Chair, secretary here, we have no letters of support, no letters of opposition.
Are there any other raised hands?
Mr. Chair, no raised hands.
Okay, then I guess we'll be looking for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 1078892789 to 793 Tremont Street. This is a change of occupancy to be used, 141734553738, residential 68 welding, residential apartments adding 13 apartments to include in building space. Violation is Article 50, Section 29. Usable open space is insufficient, and Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking and loading. Name and address for the record, please.
Lawrence Estacara, 10 Post Office Square, represent the building. It's been a fixture in this neighborhood for many years. As the photographs will indicate, this was a piano factory, which was converted to rental housing, and pianos were actually built here for about 100 years. This is in an urban neighborhood. The roof score for this building is 9/7. It's desirable because of the proximity to the MBTA and to most everything else, and it has extraordinary amounts of open space already, 29,000-plus square feet exclusive to the residence. We went back and forth with IAC, the zoning analysis included, and decided to go the board. Building to the rear was commercial. They'd like to make it residential, 13 additional rental units, no exterior work, only interior. There's already 60 parking spaces. We think that's more than in most rental buildings. There's also an opening lot across the street, as well as two barrages adjacent to the property. The commercial uses, of course, generate more traffic than residential uses. We don't think that adding 13 rental units will be in any way detrimental to the neighborhood, and there's plenty of open space. I expect far greater than any other rental building nearby. Many of these units have been subsidized for decades. No intent to change that situation. We had a virtual abutters meeting, mailed 220 letters to be sure they arrived. One person attended the virtual meeting, and Bob Langy was on the call, also made a presentation to the San Martin Neighborhood Association. We're seeking to create housing for the city which needs it, in a neighborhood where people want to live, and most have chosen not to have an automobile. And Bob Langy was the manager of the building, Todd was the architect. Are those available with any questions which I cannot answer? And I see the pictures, but I'm assuming that Ellen just signed.
Mr. Estacara, existing non-residential uses that are in the building, glass blowing, welding, et cetera, are all those going? Will it be, if this goes through, will this be 100% residential for the piano factory?
In the front of the building.
I'm sorry, you were...
There is a gallery in the front of the building, that remains, and everything else is residential.
Okay.
There is a call.
Okay. All drawings are adequate. All right, is anybody here to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office conducted an abutters meeting on August 12th, 2020. The petitioner also met with the Claremont Neighborhood Association, and the United Neighbors of Lower Roxbury was notified of the proposal. Even though there were concerns around parking, we did receive positive feedback about the addition of 13 units without changing the current footprint of the property or compromising the green space. Roughly an hour before today's hearing, I was forwarded a letter from City Life Vita Urbana dated September 4th, 2018, regarding concerns about artist displacement. Even though I am not sure if these issues have been resolved between prior tenants and the owner of the building, these issues did not come up during the community meetings, and it was not clear if the current proposal has any correlation to the prior issues. To date, we did receive six letters of support and no letters of opposition, so we'd like to go on record to support the project.
Secretary here, we have no letters of support, but we have two letters of opposition. The opposition was parking.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Samuel Ruttado, Chief of Staff of President Kim Janey, City Council President Kim Janey, we're asking the proponent to defer today. They, we understand there are 162 units at this building, and only one resident attended. We have received complaints that our reach was not done because of COVID-19.
Are there any other raised hands?
I'm sorry?
No, no, I was asking the ambassador, are there any other raised hands?
Mr. Chair, there are no raised hands.
I'm not done yet.
Okay.
So what President Janey received many concerns, the way this company displaced the artists who were using this commercial space. Now, this proponent is saying there is no interest in commercial space in this area. We think there is. However, their plan was to transform this space into housing. Now, they are not offering any affordable units, so there is also a question if they are adding 13 new units to this building and not affordable. So should we trigger at least one unit to be affordable? So in order to have more opportunity for a down, we are asking for a deferral. If not, President Janey would like to go on the record in opposition to this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Any other raised hands?
Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Estacara, can you talk a little bit about what will be the size of the units that are being...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, can you say that one more time?
What will be the size?
They are just about 1,000 square feet for each of the new rental units.
Okay, and to the question from Councilor Janey's office, given the number of units, don't you think a question of affordability ought to be factored in?
Probably 162 units which are occupied, and each four of them are affordable, which is closer to 15% than 13%.
Well, no, I understand, but I'm not talking about existing units, I'm talking about focus units.
If the chairman is asking if we can add an affordable unit, the answer is yes.
Okay, all right, okay, can you report any questions in the board? Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Can we put a proviso in that one of the units be made affordable?
Yes, the, I'm committed to that, so we want to memorialize that for sure. We also don't need BPDA design review because all the work is internal.
Yeah. So motion approved with the proviso to add one affordable unit.
To include one affordable unit, yes, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 106011930 Mayfield Street. This is a change of occupancy from a single-family home to three executive suites, extend living space into the basement, construct a new dormer. Violation is Article 65, Section 8. Executive suite's use is forbidden, Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient, and Article 65, side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Joe Baker, 30 Mayfield Street is my address. I, this is my architect, Ed Roach. So this building was boarded up and vacant for 20 years, literally 20 years. I chased it for 10. I had an agreement to buy it from the original family. When I took it over a couple of years ago, there was literally hundreds of code violations that had been written on it. It was the subject of almost every month at Columbia 7 Hill Civic Group, homeless in there, squatting in there, drugs, fires, small, all kinds of crazy stuff. And I finally got it, and I decided I wanted to restore the property. Other houses similar on the same block have been chopped up into three and four units, and you know, they took away the big grand hallways to make living space. They took away all the character to make living space and just chopped them up and jammed stuff in. I didn't want to do that, so I took a year and a half, and I restored this thing basically by myself, with the help from different contractors, and it back beautiful. Reason I want to do executive suites is because I want to be able to maintain a building of this size and this beauty. I want to be able to rock dates, to continue with maintenance, always keep the paint fresh, always keep the landscape fresh and nice, and I would hope that I could own this building forever, and my children.
The issue of executive suites has been a controversial issue in the city, and particularly in relation to the short-term rental ordinance. We have had a number of cases come before this board proposing executive suites, and we asked for an opinion from the Law Department. My understanding is that that opinion is either, has been drafted, or will be available soon, and I think we're going to have relatively soon on one of our agendas, a discussion of that Law Department memo. So I'm reluctant to move forward on a case-by-case basis. We want to have a consistent approach and a consistent policy to the issue of executive suites. So I'm going to ask for a deferral until such time as the Law Department's memo has been discussed by this board.
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, okay, all right, so you will be notified, thank you.
Well, yeah, do you want to give a date? We have a date of January 26th, Mark, as it stands now, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we will certainly, the board certainly will have had a discussion of the Law Department memo by then.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 107067612 Bowden Avenue. There is a companion case, BOA 107068914 Bowden Avenue. This is for 12 Bowden. This is the renovation of existing four-unit building at 14, sorry, at 12. This is proposing four-unit parking residential structure on a vacant lot. Violation is Article 65, Section 8. Use is forbidden. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient lot width. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient lot frontage. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient size. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient rear yard setback. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback. Article 65, Section 9, the height has been exceeded. Article 65, Section 9, the number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article 65, Section 41, access maneuvering on own lot. Violate Article 65, Section 9, access maneuvering areas on own lot, and Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking is insufficient. And this is for 14 Bowden, this is a government renovation of existing four-unit building. Building is currently gutted. Proposed additional living space in the basement, an alternate roof line. The violation is Article 65, Section 41. Off-street parking and loading, Article 65, Section 8, extending non-conforming use to four dwelling units. Article 65, Section 9, the maximal floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. And Article 65, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Adam Jasper, Centerline Development, 16 Train Street, Dorfesta.
Okay, would you describe what you're proposing to do?
Yes, thank you. We're proposing on the vacant lot, which has been assigned the address of 12 Bowden Ave, four-unit structure, all residential condos for resale. They will be accompanied by five parking spaces. We're also proposing on the existing property, 14 Bowden Ave, to renovate the building, maintain it as four units, also condos for resale, also accompanied by five parking spaces.
Okay, so the driveway between the two units will serve for both buildings?
That's correct. The original proposed parking was eight spaces, a one-to-one ratio, the driveway to be shared. After speaking with the neighborhood, we agreed it was in everybody's best interest that we add two spaces, and we maxed out our available parking in doing so. We've tried to, we would have added more if we were able to, that's the most we can fit.
Okay, and the width of the driveway is what?
The width of the driveway is 10 feet between the two buildings, and I don't know the total width of the parking area.
No, that's okay, I was just asking the driveway, and the curb, I don't see the curb cut. Is this an existing curb cut, or is this will be a new curb cut?
This, excuse me, this is an existing curb cut.
Okay, all right, Collette, could you show the, could you scroll up for the rest of the plans? How are the drawings, Mr. Kindel?
Drawings are fine, I did see a head house.
Is there a roof deck as part to the applicant?
Yes, both things have proposed roof decks.
And the access to those roof decks are through head house?
That's correct, on both structures.
Okay, and are those roof decks for just the top units?
That's correct, as of now.
Okay, do you, are you aware of this board's position about head houses?
I am not.
Okay, we rarely, on projects of this scale, we rarely approve head houses. We prefer hatches, so they don't... We prefer hatches so they don't disrupt the roof line view.
Understood, thank you.
Okay. All right, so Mr. Kindel, other than that, the drawings are okay?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Is anyone here to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Chantaly Moberoza from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And a letters meeting was held for this proposal on August 3rd of 2020. The applicant received support from Director of Butters, Andy Mountboden, Betterman Association. So the Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dustin Gardner, on behalf of City Councilor, Andrea Campbell's office. We would also like to go on record in support.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Councilor, Anissa Savi Georgi's office. Would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Brian Glasscock, BPDA. We're recommending denial without purchase on number 12. The project's not appropriate for the lot size, both in footprint and height. We did not have plans and time to review for number 14.
Mr. Chair, we have 23 letters of support, no letters of opposition.
Mr. Chair, raise hands.
I'm sorry, yes or no, raise hands?
None.
Okay. Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPDA design review, particularly for the head house. And they're probably going to have to come back for building code, right? Because you can't grant that now.
Yeah, we could, no, we don't need to grant building code, but, um, we can just say that the, provide that the head house be replaced by a hatch.
Yes, but that's forbidden.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes.
Calling your next case, calling BOA 1087144725 William Morrissey Boulevard. Project includes renovations in interior and the facade of an existing building, or maintaining the footprint of the existing building, resurfacing reconfiguration of existing onsite parking area, landscape area, and upgrade to the existing stormwater system. The violation is Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking loading. Article 65, Section 15, it's silly reparking, not on the same lot but on adjacent lots. And Article 65, Section 39, screening and buffering. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Austin Turner with Bowler. Address is 45 Franklin Street in Boston, Mass.
Why don't you go ahead and tell us what you're proposing?
Yes, sir. So, again, Austin Turner with Bowler, here this afternoon on behalf of the applicant, Floor &amp; Decor. We are proposing a new Floor &amp; Decor retail facility at the address of 729 William T. Morrissey Boulevard. The, the tenant Floor &amp; Decor is proposing to occupy what was formerly National Wholesale Liquidators Building. And if you can scroll to the next slide, please. As you can see on, on this aerial, the, the property is identified by that oddly shaped boundary with the building being approximately 80,000 square feet. Floor &amp; Decor is proposing to occup- Floor &amp; Decor is proposing to occupy that, that structure. There's substantial structural rehabilitation that's going to be performed interior to the building as well as a number of site improvements are going to be constructed. The, we've been in front of the city with the, working very closely with the team, Boston Planning Development. Initial meetings were held back in July of 2019. We recently received our approval from BPDA in March of this year and have had a number of neighborhood meetings to get to the point we're at. If you could forward through the next slides, please. Just a couple of representative photographs showing you current condition of the property. The photo on the left is looking along the southern side of the building where we're proposing a substantial amount of landscaping improvements. Photo on the right is looking down the front of the building, kind of the front driveway. That, that will bump out in the front as the, as the main entrance. Next slide, if you would, please. Again, another representative photograph just looking at the property when it was actually occupied by National Wholesale Liquidators. Looking at the front of the property, this building will be tenanted by Floor &amp; Decor. This, this rendering shows the proposed site improvements. So as I mentioned, Floor &amp; Decor is going to occupy the existing structure. And through very close collaboration with the folks over at Boston Planning, as well as through our conversation with the neighborhood group, we've made a number of substantial site improvements. The most obvious here on the plan, the, the inclusion of significant landscaping features, as you can see represented by the green shades and the tree symbols on this image. We, we are formalizing some of the access points and consolidating some of the access points here where historically and in its current shape, they're a little bit less defined. So that's a substantial improvement from a traffic flow and direction perspective. We are also going to be adding bottom center of the screen, which may be a little bit difficult to see on this image, but you can see a little blue stripe. We're adding an MBTA bus stop and shelter at the, at the bottom center. Yep, right where that little kind of orange hatch is next to the, the blue cross striping. And that, that sidewalk that runs up in the parking lot is a direct pedestrian connection from that bus stop directly to the, the front of the store where previously there were no pedestrian connections to the sidewalk infrastructure that's located on Morrissey Boulevard and on Victory Road. With this, with this plan, and what's not immediately obvious is underneath the parking lot, we are proposing a large detention and infiltration system to collect, treat, and infiltrate stormwater where the stormwater infrastructure essentially exists today. It's basically a closed pipe network with direct connections out to the, up to the street and ultimately to the receiving water body. We're working through that process currently with the BWSC and the stormwater design. It's an active review application right now.
The, the, this definitely is an oddly shaped lot. I assume it was sort of assembled over time. The parking that is outside of your lot, next to, who, who, who does that belong to?
That's, that parking, that, the rooftop that you see in the bow right corner of the image, that's an existing CVS facility that is going to remain. The, the properties here have the ability through reciprocal leavements for, for joint access and shared parking provisions. That parking lot right now, speaking candidly, looks like the surface of the moon. And it's going to be resurfaced as part of the improvements that Floor &amp; Decor is undertaking with the-
That, that was what I was, that was my next question. Because obviously it's outside of your lot lines, but in some ways it doesn't make sense to do landscaping and screening and buffering unless it's consistent in the whole area.
Yeah, that, that's something that, it's a very good observation. It's something that, that improvements to that parking area was something that we worked closely with the BPDA on too, and that came out of that review process.
Okay, well, I'm, you know, very familiar with the site. And I'm glad to see that there will be landscaping done because right now it does look like the moon.
Yeah, it, it does. And as you can see kind in the upper left corner of the image, that's one of the photos we were looking at previously, which is kind of just a beat-up old asphalt area. And we're proposing to include some substantial green space there as well.
Okay.
Left side of the building.
All right, how are the drawings, Mr. Kindel?
Drawings adequate.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the proponent?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Patrick Kindel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant stated this went through an Article 80 community review process with the BPDA, which included a community meetings as well as outreach to neighboring Butters and civic organizations. We'd like to go on record in support of this proposal, but ask for continued BPDA, BPDA design review specifically around the green and open space on site and for any signage that may be included in this proposal.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Joe McEckren, City Council, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support of the applicant and looking forward to a renewal of that particular building.
What's your name?
Joe McEckren, City Council, Frank Baker's office.
Anybody else?
No letters. Mr. Secretary here. Mr. Chair, we have no letters of support nor letters of opposition.
Any, any raised hands? Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with BPDA design review with particular attention to the green space and signage.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Calling your next case.
Thank you.
BOA 106559110 Center Avenue. This is a change of occupancy from a 3F to, to six units by dividing previous and combined units. Violation is Article 65, Section 65-8, lot area is insufficient. Article 65, Section 8, use is forbidden. And Article 65, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the rest, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Mark Lekas, Lekas Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the applicant. This is a proposal to essentially restore this triple-decker to its prior historic use, which was six units. It was taxed as a six unit for many, many years. And at some point, it looks like, according to the assessor's records, about 1997, it was turned into a three-family by essentially taking down divider walls between the units and for three families, combining the six units into three units. This proposal is to restore that historic condition back to six units by dividing up the units as shown on the floor plans. What's left is right. There are identical mirror images on each of the three floors. There is a violation for insufficient usable open space. But it being a classic triple-decker, there are large porches at the front of the building and the back of the building that are existing and do provide some usable open space. There are six parking spaces in the rear yard area accessed by an existing paved driveway. And those are, those are the items essentially purely interior renovations. The existing FAR is .96. That does not change. The maximum FAR for this sub-district is 1.3. So we're below the FAR. And again, it's an existing building being restored to its prior historic use of six units.
Are the, Mr. Lekas, are the petitions that are being proposed to be installed, are they in the exact same location as where they were before?
I believe so. The proponent, Noah Dwek, is on. If Madam Ambassador could unmute him, he could answer that.
And while we're waiting, what are the, what, what are the existing unit sizes? And what will be the proposed unit sizes?
The, each of the proposed units are approximately 900 square feet. There's about 1,800 plus or minus square feet on each of the three floors. And as you can see on the plans, it's basically divided right down the middle.
And how many bedrooms were there when it was 1,800 square feet? And how many will there be when it's 900 square feet?
I believe the bedroom count remains the same.
Noah? What's his name?
Noah Dwek, D-W-E-K.
How could the bedroom count, I mean, you're going to have to add kitchens and bathrooms, right?
I'm, I'm here now. To explain this, actually, the, the units never really, the only thing that was ever taken down was they added a doorway to combine one side to the other. So we're not actually moving or changing really any walls or bedroom counts at all. There was a doorway, if you're looking at the plans in the very front of the building, right in between the two smaller kind of closet slash office rooms there. So basically by closing that up, it just makes it back into two equal units on each floor. It was never actually, uh, the kitchens were never actually combined into one. They were always left as two. I believe the family that lived there did it all for tax purposes. It was not, you know, done for any sort of development purposes at all. So the bedrooms are one plus office on each level before they were two plus, I mean, two plus two offices on each level.
So, so even when it was a, a three unit, there were two kitchens in each unit?
Yeah, they never, uh, when we purchased the building, it was still split up the same way. There was, there was two kitchens in each unit. We've, uh, we're, we're planning on keeping it exactly the same way. There was really not, the only thing that was really done that would be of significance was there's one heating system per floor. But that would be the only real major work that was ever done to really make it into three units. I think it was just done for tax purposes because I believe it was Cousins that all lived in the building in the 90s when they did that.
Okay, Mr. Kindel, how are the drawings?
Drawings are fine.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Patrick Kindel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This went through the Butters meeting this past summer and the applicant notified all of his Butters. There were no concerns raised at the Butters meeting and would like to go on record in support.
Mr. Fear, members of the board, Dustin Gardner, on behalf of City Councilor, Andrea Campbell's office. We would also like to go on record in support.
Mr. Chair, Secretary here. We have no letters of support, no letters of opposition.
Okay, one more question for the applicant. What, what is the parking situation currently and will that change?
Uh, will not change. There's one space per unit in the back, so six spots total with access with a existing curb cut and paved driveway.
Okay. Okay, are there any raised hands?
Mr. Chair, there are no raised hands.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
But we hear a provided on there, I, a lot of that cut out, Mr. Chair.
What's that?
No provi, no proviso, there's no exterior work being done, right?
Correct.
That's correct.
Calling your next case, calling BOA 1090496 to 98 Wallsman Road. This is to add a four-story story to an existing two-and-a-half, two-family condominium. The building in change is to a two-family condo. The violation is Article 67, Section 32, off-street parking. Article 67, Section 8, use is forbidden. Article 67, Section 9, the lot area is insufficient. Article 67, Section 9, and the 4D ratio is excessive. Article 67, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 67, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Article 67, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Article 67, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. And Article 67, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, attorney base is 288.
Mr. Susan, there's something terrible, the votes.
Okay. Time to mute.
I don't know, I don't know what it is, man.
I was saying, can you hear me better now or no?
No.
Do you have more than one thing open?
I do not. You're not.
Madam Ambassador, could you organize?
Yeah, um, do you know, a person has seen on this case, they have to say, "I'm not this."
Yeah, I know.
You're going to have to reconnect them because there's a connection issue with your audio.
I will do that, thank you.
It's impossible, it's impossible to hear you and to go through with this. We should move on to the next one and see if you guys can sort out the, the audio problem.
Just so we're clear, I'm not going to read it back into the record, it was a long one. Calling next case, calling BOA 109537222 Conway Street. This is a roof deck above the first floor and the left side of the house. The violation is Article 9, Section 1, extension of non-conforming use. And Article 67, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Is the applicant here?
Yeah, we're here.
Okay, go ahead. You want to tell us what, what you're proposing?
Yeah, so this is Kim Patch and Eric Smalley, we're the owners.
And there's a, you can see on the second page, there's a picture of the plot. There's an existing first-floor roof. And we, the proposal is to put a roof deck on the roof. So the, the deck's going to be on the second floor. I think the violation is it's too close to our backyard, which is our neighbor's side yard, but our house goes beyond that. So the house is-
Okay, yeah, the, the, you're cited for rear yard insufficient, so that's, um, but that's, is that an existing condition?
Yes. It's, it's on a roofing roof and the house actually goes beyond that, so- Yes, it's, it's on a existing roof, and the house actually goes beyond that, so it's closer than the, the new deck.
Okay, how is that roof deck access?
There's an existing door from the second-floor unit to the roof.
Okay. Why don't you keep, Colette, keep scrolling down the plan so we can take a look. How are the plans, Mr. Kindal? Okay, so the.
Drawings are fine.
That, here we go. This one, anyone know, this is, this is what we're talking about, right? This drawing?
Yes.
Okay, and, and you access it right by the, underneath that gable roof? Is that the access?
No, the door is perpendicular to our view, so.
Okay.
Sort of the left structure there.
Underneath the.
The door comes, comes out toward the right.
Got it, okay, yeah. Okay, and the drawings are fine, Mr. Kindal?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board, Joe Cuffinger with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this proposal. The applicants fly the Butters. Since that distribution, we have not heard any comments or concerns from the neighbors. This is a small project that we believe will benefit their home and not affect anyone in the surrounding area. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Secretary here. We have one letter of support, no letters of opposition.
Okay, any other raised hands? Okay.
No raised hands.
Okay, then I'm looking for a motion.
A motion to approve. BPDA design review.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, do you wanna go back to Wellsmere? Looks like Mr. Zizoula was on.
I'm on now, yes. Can you hear me better, Mr. Secretary?
We can hear you fine.
Thank you, sir. I apologize profusely for my laptop. I have headphones on now. Hopefully that will work better.
I'm just gonna call it in for the record again, calling BOA 1073904, 96 to 98 Wellsmere Road. I will not call the violations back in. We're gonna have it on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, again, apologies. Nick Zizoula, McDermott, Colty, and Miller. With me today is Derek Rubenoff, who's the architect on the project, as well as Mark Yan and Laura Kalinsky, who are the, one of the property owners and the appellant's here. So this property is located on, in Rosendale on Wellsmere Road, off of Washington Street. If you could leave it here, this is a good, a good image to leave it on for this introduction. It's a unique corner lot. It's that White House you can see in this screen now. The corner, it's a corner lot, it's about 5,500 square feet, and it's on the corner of Wellsmere Road and Wellsmere Park, which is actually a dead-end private way that has a few houses on it. There's also a grade change as you move up the parcel, and then as you also move up Wellsmere towards Kitchard Street and Hammond Street beyond. So the proponents here, Mark Yan and Laura, they bought the second-floor condo in this existing two-family building a little over two years ago. And as they've been living in the condo and putting down roots in the neighborhood, they've realized that there's an opportunity here or an ability to do some renovations, upgrades, and the proposed expansion at the property, which will allow them to remain in the neighborhood for the long term and which would add an additional unit to the condo building, which is what is being proposed today. So what they're proposing to do, and Ayesha or Colette, you could continue to scroll at this point if you don't mind, what they're proposing to do is add a half-story to this existing building and change the use to a three-family. What they would also be proposing to do is adding a smaller, full side addition to allow for stair access to the new third unit from the rear, from the front of the building. And that side addition is about a third of the, the building that's existing now, so it's not a full side addition. It's, it's not habitable space. You can see it here coming up. And on the next page, it will show you what's there now and what's proposed. And all that, that's not habitable space, it's just to allow for, here from the right, it's just to allow for proper access from the front of the building to that existing third unit. And so what this would allow them to do is, we would suggest, would reasonably expand the building and add a third condo unit just on top of the two-story building that's there now. It is a two-family zone, but there is a, kind of a mix of ones, predominantly twos, and there are some threes in the area as well. So it would fit with the immediate context of the area. There would be no expansion of the building footprint besides that side addition. And the new, the new unit that would be going on the top floor, that would be a two-bed, two-bath, approximately 1,380 square feet. So a good-sized two-bed, two-bath condo. Again, it is a condo building, and they're proposing to have it be a part of the condominium association.
Mr. Zizoula.
Yes, sir.
Let me, I'm a little confused how, in a condo association building with two units, how does one unit expand the entire property?
So, because they're on the second floor of this condo building, they had to get the approval of the, the other condo unit owner on the first floor, which is a couple with the two-year-old or a small child. So basically, they needed to get their approval through the condo docs to add a third unit.
And that approval has been gained?
Yes, sir. The condo docs have been amended, obviously, in preparation for this, for this hearing in order to make sure that they can move forward with this proposal. So it's been approved in the condo docs internally between the two condo owners, obviously with the caveat that it needs to be approved by the city and by this board.
Right, understood. Okay, well, that makes sense because it didn't seem legally possible for one owner to unilateral.
Correct. No, it's definitely, no, that's a fair question, Mr. Chair, and that's not the case. It's not unilateral. They have their approval to go forward with this and add, add a three, a third unit to the condo as they've met with that, that first-floor condo owner, so.
Okay, do you, are there elevations or renderings that would show what the post building would look like?
Yes, sir. If Colette or Ayesha, I don't know who's controlling this, I apologize, continues, you'll see proposed elevations here. And then if you continue to go down, there's a few more street views that show, here's a good one here, how it will show in what the existing context of the neighborhood. I will know, Mr. Chair, that we did work ahead of time with the BPDA in order to make, you know, to get their design input even before we came to this hearing, just to make sure that what's in front of you, it has been, has been reviewed at least initially with them.
Yeah, okay. It's a pretty attractive, the design of the existing house is pretty attractive. You don't wanna lose that.
No, and, and we're not. It's, it's, you know, Mr. Rubenoff, who's the architect, is on, and I can see him here, but if you continue to scroll down, I think there's even some more renderings that showed an even better, different 3D views. You can see it here that, that the plan is to continue that character and the architectural character of what's there now, so that frankly, you wouldn't even notice that this was an add-on, that it will be something that, that will fit in with the existing neighborhood and also with what's there now.
Yeah.
Here's some good figures of that here.
Okay.
Go ahead, Derek. I don't know if I can add anything else.
I just thought I'd jump in for a second and say that we, our aim, as Nick mentioned, is to keep, be consistent with the character of the existing building. So we're proposing to rebuild the existing roof line just up higher, so you would see that we have that kind of clipped gable at the front. We would rebuild that just higher. And then the, the character of the side elevation would be reconstructed such that it's, again, just higher. So that, we'd be adding a porch on top of the existing porch at the back on the left there. If you see, you see in the bottom right corner, you can see that, that view of the porch. The, at the front corner, reconstructing, proposing to reconstruct the, the end gable on that sort of sunroom area, and then in the, on the far right where the, there's an existing outcrop of the built, outcrop of the, the entry to the second-floor unit. We would be replacing that with a, a full stair up to the third floor, but again, we're recessing that back from the front as much as we can in terms of making sure we have something, oh, well, that would work. But again, keeping the roofline character that's, that's present, in fact, rebuilding the, that kind of clipped gable, building a third one at the entrance to the second and third floor units there at the bottom right of the building.
The, you, they've got a whole host of violations cited here. May I ask about parking? There's off-street parking, there's two provided, four-minute required. What's, what's the existing condition?
Yes, sir, I can answer that. So the existing condition now is there are four spaces, so what's, what's required is six spaces, two per unit, and what's there now is four. There's two garage spots and two driveway spots. Those are tandem spots. So you would have a garage spot and a tandem spot behind it in the driveway like you would in any normal garage and driveway situation, which are, which can be utilized for the two existing units. So there are four off-street parking spaces. And then additionally, Wellsmere Park, as I had mentioned at the initial outset, Wellsmere Park is a private way, so the Kalinskis own up to the center line of the private way to the length of their property. And one of the initial renderings that we showed in the initial images show that there is, you know, Wellsmere Park is not paved, it's not lined, but it is pretty clearly marked as a private way both by the City of Boston on the street sign and by, by private parking signs as well. And so there are three, I would say, three healthy parking spaces along their own property on the private dead-end street that would allow for those extra vehicles for this new unit to, to be situated on there. So Wellsmere Road itself should, is, is a public road. It's not resident permit parking only, but we would not anticipate that these new, this new unit would utilize that whatsoever. They would be able to park on the private way.
Mr. Kindal, how are the drawings?
Drawings are adequate.
Okay, any questions on the board? Is anyone here to speak on behalf of the proponents?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Joe Cuffinger with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. Would like to go on record in support of this proposal. The homeowners were able to receive a, a number of letters of support that should have been submitted to the board appropriately. I would also like to note that through the community process, we did receive a number of concerns about added density and parking. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Anybody else?
Yeah, so I have two raised hands.
Mr. Chair, the Secretary here, before we get to that, we have 23 letters of support and six letters of opposition, and those letters of our opposition, as the Mayor's Office just quoted, basically parking and the density in a two-family, adding a three-family to a two-family zone.
Mr. Chair, Brian Glasscock for BPDA. Our agency recommends approval with design review.
You wanna go to the raised hands?
Claudia, you're on mute. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I am the owner of the house next to 9698. I've been here 38 years. I'm also speaking for, for other abutting households that couldn't be here due to work responsibility. And before I get my reasons, I wanna just note that when, that the, the changes were recorded last November, they spoke to us beginning in March, so way before. And when I asked Mark Yan directly, are you expanding the footprint? He said, no. When I asked, do you have enough needed parking? He said, yes. They've been taking photographs since January of spaces on Wellsmere Road. They know people are going to park on Wellsmere Road. So why I'm concerned, this is a very dense neighborhood, they have a tiny lot. It's a two-family neighborhood. There's only two other houses that have added dormers on Wellsmere Road. Nobody's raised the roof. One was because it was a large family, they had lots of kids, they needed more bedrooms. The other guy added dormers, he needed rental income because he wasn't doing well in his carpentry business, and he's still here. So, and, so, and tandem parking, we all know tandem parking doesn't work. People hate it, they're going to park on the road, and I've been taking pictures of the road to show that it's parked up. So it all depends on when you take the photographs. And next to me, there are one of the letters, and I have, you know, people have been writing these form letters that you got, only 10 of them were not from Wellsmere Road, only seven were form letters from Wellsmere. We wrote personally-written letters, including from an arthritic lady living next to me who needs to have parking right outside her house. So we are very opposed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Carla, you're on mute.
Hi there, this is Mark Collins. I'm at 101103 Wellsmere Road in favor of the project. You know, from, from mine and my wife's standpoint, you know, there seems to be an abundance of parking on that corner lot, and just wanted to speak up in favor of Mark Yan and, and his wife here.
Thank you.
Carla, you're on mute.
Hi, my name is Amy Papadopoulos. My address is 89 Wellsmere Road, and I support their project.
Thank you.
No further raised hands, Mr. Chair.
Okay, based on all of that input, can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 1069212, 4395 to 4407 Washington Street. This is to combine parcels of 10,300 square, 306 square feet and change arguments from retail to a restaurant used to 36A restaurant to laundromat to include 14 residential units constructed three stories above, adding 15,232 square feet on top of the existing. The violation Article 9, Section 1, reconstruction and extension of a non-conforming building. Article 67, Section 12, the number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article 67, Section 32, off-street parking loading requirement, insufficient residential parking. Article 67, Section 32, off-street parking loading requirement, insufficient commercial parking. Article 67, Section 33, conform to an existing street alignment model. Article 67, Section 30, screening and buffering. Article 67, Section 12, excessive FAR. Article 67, Section 12, excessive height. Article 67, Section 12, insufficient sideyard set-top. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is John Freeman from Platt Anderson Freeman Architects for Belgrade Avenue in Stockton, and I'm here with Joseph Portolucci, who is the owner and proposer, and Sam Dennis, who's also from our office. We're proposing to keep a one-story commercial building but add three stories to the top of it for much-needed housing in the area. There are 14 units that are enclosed. They range in size from 750 square feet for a one-bedroom unit to over 1,500 square feet for a three-bedroom unit. These are to be rental housing, and we hope that there are two and three-bedroom units that will attract families. We're also planning to make this a very green building, plan an array of photovoltaics on the roof. And in terms of parking, there's 14 units, I'm sorry, 14 spaces existing that we plan to keep. We will use shared parking between the commercial units and the residential units, and also have a electric charging station, ride-sharing, and that kind of thing. It's also worth noting that this is on three bus lines and an easy walk to Rosendale Village where there is computer rail and other, other means of getting around, so we expect, we hope the tenants will not all have cars.
You can hope, but that's, okay. So you've got 14 spaces that you're sharing between the residential units and the commercial applications?
Yes, the, I mean, the stores are only open until like, you know, five, six o'clock, and after that, the entire amount of parking is available for the neighbors, or, well, for anybody who's there at the moment. If you go there anytime, probably after six o'clock, you'll discover that the parking lot is empty. And, and there's nobody there until like eight o'clock, nine o'clock in the morning. So the, that's what I'm calling shared parking, because if commercial isn't using it, well, it's obviously available for residential.
And, and during the day, is it fully occupied from by the car users?
Are you talking about the parking area?
Yes.
It's, I would say, good half to two-thirds, but there's always, there are always spaces there.
Okay. Because if they're shopping, they only go in for five or 10 minutes and they're gone. So the turnover is quite, quite big. Okay. How are the drawings, Mr. Kendel?
Drawings are adequate.
Okay. Is there anybody here to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. Joe Koppinger with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record and support it as proposed. This is a project we've seen in similar locations in the neighborhood. But added density. I would also just like to note that there were concerns around the parking that have been brought forth.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. This is Caitlin Fleishman on behalf of Councilor Arroyo. We'd like to go on record and support.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dave Viterini on behalf of City Councilor Michelle Wu. We'd also like to go on record and support.
Mr. Chairman, Brian Glasscock on behalf of Boston Building Development Agency. We recommend approval with the proposal, design review, to focus on how this building relates to the neighboring building.
Good afternoon.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Karen Foley, City Council, Anissa Asabi, we'd like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have one letter of support, no letters of opposition.
Mr. Chair.
Any raised hands?
Four. Five.
Okay, let's go.
Stephen, you're unmuted.
Steve Gag, 631 South Street in Rosendale. I've known Joe and I've known his business for a long time. This is exactly the kind of project we need in Rosendale. High-density, transportation-oriented, great design in terms of energy efficiency. So I'm all for it, and it's going to work.
Okay, thank you.
Paula, you're unmuted.
This is Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan on behalf of City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty echoing the sentiments of the Mayor's Office to counsel on record and support.
Sarah, you're unmuted.
Hi, Mr. Chairman and committee. My name is Sarah Holden. I live at 22 Metropolitan Ave. And I love Joe. Joe has been instrumental to my family's integration into the community here, and I want nothing more than to support this project. However, I'm deeply concerned about the traffic. If you can turn to the presentation on page seven, you'll note that a car parked directly in front of the hardware store. It blocked the entrance to our street metropolitan, which is a dead-end street. There are cars parked there throughout the day. There's a sign there that says no parking. I'm deeply concerned that the parking situation on our road will become untenable. And I'd love, I think it's slide seven. I, I would just, I want to do nothing more than support Joe's proposal. I just want to make sure that it's safe for my family. We have a, we have a child with health concerns, and we need to make sure that there's constant access for traffic to flow in and out of our street.
Okay, thank you.
Stephanie, you're unmuted.
Hi, thank you, committee. My name is Stephanie Miller. I live at 14 Metropolitan Avenue. We live on the dead-end street, just a couple doors down from Sarah who just spoke. I want to echo those concerns regarding parking and access to the street. A couple of things that have been reported pretty consistently from the people who live here and have to actually, you know, live in the experience of all of the construction. We too want to support Joe in his endeavors to modernize our neighborhood, but here we have a significant problem with parking. A couple of things. I don't believe that shared parking is a real thing. The reality is there are people who are going to take advantage of the commuting capabilities of having three bus lines right there, and they're going to park their cars in the back to use on the weekends. You can't necessarily discriminate, or maybe you can. You can let me know if this is true or not. Against, but when they're getting, their landlords have applied for housing in the location of saying, well, do you own a car? Will you ever own a car? So Dead End Street is already at parking capacity. We have residents that end up parking at the end of the Dead End Street illegally, just to find a safe space to park their cars currently. And I'm also greatly concerned about snow and trash removal in the event that we already have parking concerns. People continue to illegally park right in front of the side of the building, which is where the entrance to the hardware store is located. 311s have been submitted periodically by people of this street.
You know, ma'am, thank you for, we get, we understand that your objection is to the problem that parking is going to create. If you have something else to add, that's fine, but there's, you made your point extremely well. Okay, thank you.
Deborah, you're unmuted.
Hi, Director Benson, 2 Metropolitan Avenue. And I just need to amplify what Sarah and Stephanie have already brought up. There are significant concerns around parking and around the safety issues that creates for our ability to access the street here on this end of Metropolitan.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you.
That's, um, Mr. Chair.
All right. Clearly, to, to the applicant, you've got some close neighbors who are generally supportive but are very, very concerned about parking. I don't know whether there's any possibility with any of your design of expanding parking. Is, is that, is that a possibility? Let me ask that question. Well, I would, I'm glad people have brought that up. And I've tried to show the neighbors that there's a gas station right next door. The gas station, if you count them, they must have 35 or 40 cars on that lot. And unfortunately, a lot of those cars are parked illegally right near the corner. And, and it looks as though I'm using those spaces. I'm not. There are two tow trucks going in and out of that gas station constantly. I know. Okay, okay, sir. We can't, we are here to hear the case for your property. We can't do anything about what the gas station does or doesn't do. I ask a simple question. Is it possible for your design, for your address, to accommodate more additional parking? I technically could come up with some more parking because I own the property next, next door as well, and I also live next door. So, and I've been there for the last 50 years. So I suppose there are possibilities, but. Okay, that, that, that was all. I, I think if we're going to, you know, we will soon move to considering a motion. My guess is if we're going to consider approval, it will probably involve a design review with the notion of, of expanded parking. But, so I just, that's why I asked the question. Okay, thank you. So can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with design review that focuses on expanding parking and working with BTB as well on regulation for the curbspace to make sure safe access in and out of Metropolitan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion passes.
Thank you. Calling the last case of the day, calling BOA 1065868, 254256 Washington Street. This is a change of argument from a two-family and restaurant with takeout to six units, multi-family dwelling and restaurant with takeout. Demolish the two families, construct a new petition for the six residential units, a takeout restaurant and kitchen to be renovated. The violation is Article 51, Section 58, tip-off-street parking is insufficient. Article 51, Section 8, a multi-family dwelling forbidden is, is a forbidden use. Article 51, Section 9, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article 51, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 51, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Article 51, Section 9, front yacht is insufficient. And Article 50, Article 51, Section 9, rear yacht is insufficient. And Article 9, Section 2, a change in a non-conforming use. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Matali Biswas from Dane Torpey. Our firm represents the applicant in connection with this project. With me today is the architect, CJ Wilbur. This application is for the demolition of the existing two-family structure and reconstruction to a six-unit affordable housing residential building, including renovations to the existing restaurant. To give a very brief overview, the project underwent a lengthy but successful public process over the course of 2018 and 2019, through which the applicant met with the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association four times and the Butters three times. Through this process, the applicant took feedback from the Mayor's Office, the BAIA, and the Butters, and shaped the project based on that collaboration. For example, the project cut three units to address density comments and cited the open space courtyard to address the nearest residential of Butters comments. Further, several people have commented on how much they like the design. This project seeks no greater relief than necessary to develop high-quality, affordable units. There are currently seven bedrooms in the existing structure, and the project will result in 10 bedrooms. The goal was to design much-needed, family-style workforce housing as opposed to luxury condos. As a result of the extensive public process, the project proposal is in harmony with the general purpose of the code and the character of the neighborhood, and also has support from the neighborhood. Therefore, we respectfully request the board to approve this project, and both Mr. Wilbur and I are available for any questions.
Okay. What is the size of the proposed units?
Yes, hello, Mr. Chair and the board. This is Clinton Wilbur, the architect from Salt and Stall Architects in 380 Wareham Road in Marion, Massachusetts. We have proposed four two-bedroom units, two on the first floor, two on the second floor, each approximately 100 square feet. We have proposed two bedroom, two one-bedroom units on the third story, each about 600 square feet.
So those are pretty small units.
As, in, in response to a lot of the BAIA comments, we did make units more compact to address their concern for open space on the lot.
Okay. I, I thought the opening presentation talked about it being family-style units. I would not describe a 600-square-foot unit as accommodating a family.
So again, those were, those are two single bedrooms on the third floor, which would be workforce units.
Okay. How, how are you going to, this is, we're talking also Brighton. How are you going to make sure these are not student units?
The, two of the units will be occupied by the owner, the Tulipakis family. The owners, Maria and Stephen, will occupy one of the two-bedroom units. They have a granddaughter that would occupy one of their units as well. The property would be managed by Tulipakis's daughter, Kathy Michaelidis.
Okay. The rendering on the first slide that we saw looks a lot like just a standard residential building. How is the, how was the design for the restaurant accommodated within that? How was the restaurant accommodated within that design?
So if you look at the rendering, the restaurant is the existing wedge-shaped building there on the corner, Brick House Pizza. And, and the intent would be to leave the takeout portion of that untouched. The kitchen of the existing pizza runs under the existing building. The new kitchen, the kitchen would be renovated underneath the existing building. I'm sorry, the proposed building.
Okay. Got it. And, and again, also Brighton parking is also a premium. How is parking handled in this proposal?
So current, the, sorry, Matali, did you want to address that?
Sure, yes. The project provides for a total of five off-street parking that did not previously exist, and the on and off to that parking is off of Shepherd Street, which is off of Washington Street.
Okay. How are the drawings, Mr. Kendel?
Drawings are adequate.
Okay, any questions in the board? Is anyone here to speak in support of the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like on record to support this proposal. As you heard from the applicant, they were engaged in a lengthy community process. Butters' meetings conducted my predecessor, but I was on for several of their meetings. They had Brighton-Alston Improvement Association, where they worked closely with a number of direct of Butters who were also members of that organization. You know, they addressed changes to the building regarding parking, scaling back the density, and also ensuring that the character of the outside of the building matches up pretty well with the surrounding structures in that area. We think this is a great opportunity to add more housing and also Brighton where we desperately need it, and also think that it's sensitively done so that it fits in well with everything else. We appreciate, and we think would be in support of this. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Brian Glasscock from BPDA. We recommend approval with a design review.
Any, any letters of support or opposition, Mr. Fortune?
No, we, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, we have zero letters of support and zero letters of opposition.
Mr. Chair, I have two raised hands.
Okay, let's go.
Annabelle, you're unmuted.
Chairman, members of the board, Annabelle Gomson of the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association. They presented to us four times. They worked closely with their abutting neighbors, addressing concerns that they had. They made many changes. We do feel that this is a good project. It will house two of the family members at the project and also have some affordable housing instead of all the luxury housing that's being built across the street at St. Gabriel's. So we'd like to go on record and support.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members here. Sorry, you're unmuted. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This is Maury McCray from Councilor Breeden's office. Councilor Breeden would like to go on record as being in opposition to this project. We believe this, this project is of inappropriate density for this area.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I have one minute to just respond to the opposition on record, please?
Yeah, hold on, just, we're waiting, we're getting testimony. Anybody, Madam Bass, or anybody else?
That, that concludes the raised hands.
Okay, go ahead and, and respond.
Thank you. We are mindful of the fact that there are those who did not benefit from the entire public process, but as has been stated for the record, the project went through extensive meetings, underwent revisions and concessions resulting in the collaboratively designed project that will address the much-needed affordable housing and improve the characteristic of the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Based on the testimony we've heard and the, and the proposal, I'd like to get a motion, please.
Motion to approve with BPDA design review.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. That is, Mr. Fortune, our last case of the day, is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
All right, well, thank you to Ayesha and Colette and all of the staff that helped put this together, and the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty.